I'd like to call a meeting together. Please rise for the pledge allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we have a little call please?
Commissioner Ann Zorgi appears to be absent today. Commissioner Rushton?
I haven't heard from him so I'm not, he's just, I think he'll just be late.
Commissioner Rushton?
Present.
Commissioner Bennett?
Here.
Commissioner Wessel?
Here.
Commissioner Sosilittle?
Here.
Commissioner Rattenbach?
Here.
Commissioner Lautner?
Present.
Thank you. So that brings us to communications, proclamations, and presentations. The first on our list is the resolution to recognize the first day of October as Indigenous Peoples' Day. And I'd like to read that to you. Whereas the County of Lillinau is situated on a peninsula of unique and unparalleled beauty, which provides a bounty to its residents through fertile land and access to Lake Michigan and the Grand Traverse Bay, and whereas the County of Lillinau would not exist nor its residents enjoy its beauty and bounty but for the annexation of its land from the homelands of the Anish- Anishin- Anishanabik people, who live here since time immemorial and to the present day, and whereas the County of Lillinau understands that the historical relationship that brought it into being now wishes to recognize with gratitude the roots, history, and contributions of the Anishanabik people towards its existence, and whereas an international movement began in 1977 to initiate an Indigenous Peoples' Day by a delegation of native nations to the United States. And whereas in 1990, representatives from 120 indigenous nations at the First Continental Conference on 500 Years of Indians' Resistance unanimously passed a resolution to use Columbus Day as an opportunity to educate the public about Indian cultures that preexisted European contact and still exist and thrives today. And whereas since 1990, numerous municipalities throughout the United States have incorporated the principles of the First Continental Conference by voting to institute an Indigenous Peoples' Day and to use the day to honor the culture, heritage, and contributions of their native citizens and neighbors. And whereas Lillinau County wishes to extend recognition and appreciation of its Anishanabik citizens and neighbors and their shared history, now therefore be it resolved that Lillinau County shall forthwith recognize the first day of October as Indigenous Peoples' Day. Further be it resolved that Indigenous Peoples' Day shall be used to reflect the ongoing challenges posed to indigenous people in this, of this land, and to celebrate their continued existence and culture, and to honor and appreciate their commitment to protecting and preserving the earth for resources and all living peoples, all living beings. Thank you. And I would like to present this then to Mr. Mark Wilson, who is a tribal president of the tribe.
Thank you very much.
Can I say a few words? I really appreciate that.
Just an honor to accept this on behalf of the tribal council, the people of the Grand Travers Band of Ottawa and Chippewa Indians, and to know that we have the support of our neighbors and the commission is a highly regarded gesture. We really appreciate it and thank you so much. Thank you.
Then that would bring us to the administrator's update.
Good morning and happy October. I came home last night around 10 o'clock. I looked outside, it was 75 degrees out. I was shocked. When I found it, sat on the porch, maybe the last time to do that at that time of the day. So, I'll start with this photo here. It's Northport. I want Commissioner Wessel to know I made it there without using GPS. I found my way to Northport. Commissioner Wessel, always making comments, "I don't know how to get to Northport." So, it was uncaged, it was a great event Saturday night. The highlight was for us seeing the Red Elvises. If you haven't seen the Red Elvises, they truly are a band from Russia. At first, I didn't know if they were really from Russia or they were just kind of a parody band, but I checked, they've been around since 1995 and most members are from Russia and do a very unique collection of music. It was a great event, beautiful night, and we made it home from Northport without GPS also. Just wanted to prove that I was there. All right, kind of a bittersweet event. We have one of our own that's retiring here, Marilyn Calhoun. If you look at this picture, you see Marilyn is smiling. I'm thinking, I've been here almost eight years, I have never seen Marilyn not smile. That's true. So, I walked in yesterday, she didn't know I was going to snap a picture, but take a look, what's on her face, smiling.
Probably a little bigger than normal.
Yes, I did notice that. She has been getting a little sassy towards me lately though. She's here, and Paul, let me say a few words, I didn't introduce. Well, there you are, okay.
Well, I have to tell you, Marilyn has really been special around there. You know, just like everybody in everybody's offices, we all have had our problems, we've had some challenges around there, but Marilyn's always had a word of encouragement for all of us there, and we're really going to miss her. She's been in the department, our department, for eight years, and it's going to be tough not having her around there, because it's really been fun. All the guys, you know, they come in all around during the morning and comes back, "Hi guys," or "How you doing, King Carl," or, and makes a nice atmosphere. We're really going to miss her.
Stand up, Marilyn.
Say thank you. It's been a privilege and a pleasure.
Now, you're going to be on the senior golf tour?
Yeah, I'm working that way, but I don't think it's going to happen. In fact, it's been perfect.
Paul is absolutely right, she is the face of the department when people walk in, and it sets the whole tone. If you walk in and see someone smiling and happy, it changes the whole tone and attitude. And ever since she's been working with Paul, we've been calling her Saint Marilyn for putting it out there with all that stuff. I mean, it fits her very well. HVAC project, I believe Kirsten is here to give you an update. As you know, we've been talking about this for a long time, and it's nice to see work taking place here.
Kirsten?
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Good morning, everybody. Just really quickly, just wanted to let you know that work commenced on the 16th of September, which would be about two weeks ago today, a little after today. The boilers are being delivered today. The first thing that has taken place is that they've been able to install proper drainage and cement housekeeping pads downstairs in the gym, and they are being installed today. So if you care to, you can go down and take a look. You'll also notice that throughout the lower level, there's quite a lot of ceiling tile that's been removed. They're installing the piping for the mains for the baseboard heating, and everything else seems to be progressing as scheduled. We did have a slight modification in our schedule based upon one of the department's needs. They requested that due to some events that are taking place in November, they asked if we could work on their spaces first, so we kind of shuffled our schedule a little bit. But what I have to say is that the staff has been very cooperative, very appreciative, and so far we've been able to meet everyone's expectations. So, we hope to be in full swing on the middle level probably toward the end of this month. I'm thinking that the piping main, piping action is going to continue on the third level, go around the back of the building, and then because of the schedule upstairs in the month of November, we're going to work on the middle level in November. And then the delivery of the radiator tubes will take place latter half of November on the lower and middle level, and then on the upper level in December. So, everything's on track, no glitches, everything seems to be going just fine. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And to coincide with that, another major project, because you know we've been dealing with for the last couple of years, is the roof. And Dale, I believe is here, what's an update?
Hello?
It's all yours?
All mine. Well, we got the project done, I believe, in record time. I want to say that we did a final inspection, not this Friday, Friday before, we had a couple of small minor items that needed to be done with regard to the actual roof system. Jerry informed us that the couple of the, there's an overflow, there's a regular drain, a couple of the strainers were reversed, and so we had a bit of an issue with water coming that was supposed to go down the drain, up the sidewalls, and that was corrected. So, contractor evidently misplaced them, which is an honest mistake, could have been done, they should have marked it, but that was easily resolved. And everything else meets specification. I just texted the contractor asking if he had all the punch list items done. He said he did. So, we had a meeting in your office after that, and I think there was a exchange of a couple bills and stuff. They had a nick something and had an issue, and so they gave back some change order items in return for that, and I think you're set with that.
Yeah, as you remember, we found out there was some flashing, it was missing, had to come to you, and we had to approve almost $5,500 worth of extra work. And then while it was going on, through a simple error, one of the workers cut a free online, which we had to rent some portable storage units for the food, that came to $3,800. So, I said, "Let's just call it even." I figured it was a fair swap.
$5,500 for $3,800? And they said yes. So, it was good.
It was just easy to work with them. Just an example of how easy it was to work with the company, so I was glad. And I think Michelle was here, she was saying how, she was amazed that they were working Saturdays and Sundays here, which they were. They did get the job done, they had scheduled, just like the clerk.
Just like her staff.
Yep.
Well, they're, because they're from Detroit area, so they were staged up here, and somewhere they got a bed and breakfast, a large one, and so, sun was shining, which we actually had the best weather, I think, of the whole year in August, so that was very fortunate. And I did bring a sample, a mock-up of the actual product that was installed, to kind of show you the durability of it. That board is the board that goes over the actual insulation materials. You can see the two plies, the heavy buildup, the polyurethane between the system, very, very durable system.
That doesn't get brittle in the cold?
No, it stays flexible down to 40 degrees.
Down to?
Forty, below zero.
Well, thank you.
Or 25 below zero, excuse me.
Okay, that'll make it through November.
So, you got a very durable system there, so it'll take a lot of abuse, and some things that may not mean a lot to you, but actually that's all new technology in that roof ply that, there's a scrim in there, doesn't wick any moisture, and the granules have a granule lock ability, so they don't lose granules. And you got a very, very good roof, and I appreciate the opportunity to serve you guys.
So I'm hoping this is the last time we ever talk about the LEC roof after two years of all these special meetings and so forth. And Dale, thank you for your.
Well, I figured when I'm 103, it'll be up for warranty renewal, so they're probably, hopefully they have a drone, they can lift me up and get me back on the roof, and we'll get you back on the warranty in whatever year that is.
So, on this, they, there's, you put this board down, then you glue down that first layer?
Yep.
And then you put a coating over it, or is that the glue?
That's another second, another adhesive layer.
Okay.
And then that top ply, so.
So this is actually an adhesive, it's not a?
It's an adhesive, but it's also waterproofing. So you've actually have two waterproofing plies, and then you have two waterproofing courses. So you've got a quarter inch of waterproofing, there are 250 mils of waterproofing. And so, when we're talking about this going back, the option for that would have been 60 mils, so you've got four times the waterproofing of a single ply membrane, which is what you need up there for all the traffic, and if you get a chance to get up there, you'll, it's pretty amazing how much equipment you actually have up there. I haven't quite seen a roof like that in a while, so.
All right, any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Really appreciate the job you did for us.
No more talk about the roof, I hope. All right. We have another substance abuse commissioning this Friday. It's at our partnership with the tribe, so it's at the Medicine Lodge. In October is Substance Abuse Awareness Month, a lot of activities coming on, so Commissioner Rushton, would you like to just give a brief update?
Prevention, the subgroup, the prevention group met twice over the last couple of weeks, and we finalized a program that will be implemented in all of the schools. I commend the Mike Carmine and all of the, I'm not sure what their positions are, social workers.
Yeah, it's a joint between the superintendent's and the counselors and social workers.
Yeah, they are doing a fantastic job. And I do believe that there will be a meeting for parents on the 23rd. The kids are going to, each school is going to do something different with an overall theme. There'll be a theme where there'll be education, but each school will have breakout sessions for the kids. So what we're trying to do is spin this, Lillinau County, the statistics for Lillinau County are very good compared to other counties, so we have talked about celebrating the decisions that our youth have made. We thought that putting a positive spin on this to encourage them to continue the good choices that they make. So, with that said, there'll be educational classes all throughout the day, and then in between those educational classes, these leaders in the school have certain programming so that these kids can go out and learn healthy choices, or they're going to do just different events for entertainment and celebration, you might say. Want to add to that, Dave?
No, I did, you said it well. I commend Deb for the leadership. She's provided nice leadership, as has Greg McMaro and Mike Carmine, and I think we're making progress. The prosecutor's office has been very helpful as well, and the schools have been helpful. So it's going well.
One of the things that's open to the public is a week from Thursday at the Bay Theater. We have a partnership with them, and we are one of the co-sponsors of this movie, Resilience, and I guess it's a very powerful movie, has been shown around the country at many sites, but it's free and open to the public, and there'll be a panel discussion afterwards. So thank you for the Bay Theater for offering their facility for us. So, a lot of behind the scenes things going on. The key is prevention and education. It's almost too late, but time to get hooked on those things. So what can we do to prevent them from getting to that stage? It's not just young kids, it's adults, it's seniors. We're working April Messiah's, trying to educate the senior population also, because that's a big, big issue. So thank you, everyone, for all your hard work on that. One of my usual stops for many years on a Friday coming home from work, when I worked at MC, was at the video store on M22. It was Blockbuster Video, anything family video.
Yeah.
Kind of always themed, and as you drive by, it's gone. There's a new sign there that's called the Discovery Center, and I thought, "Well, what is that?" So, it's a partnership with Rotary. So I stopped by a couple of weeks and got a tour, and I have two people here that are going to tell us about that. So Matt, you want to start, then you want to introduce, or Becky, you want to come up here too, or you both want to come up here? You can introduce yourselves and give us a brief update on what's going on there.
You have the chair hips.
So, hi, I'm Matt McDonough, I'm new with the Discovery Center. This is Becky Ewing, Detective Director of Rotary Charities and Rotary Camps and Services. I started a couple of months ago. Are, how many of you familiar with the Discovery Center? A few folks? Okay, so those of you that may not be in the audience, it's home, it's, you know, we own a campus there, it's about 18 acres altogether, goes all the way back to the Lillinau Trail, which is not on the map. And a lot of that 18, 19 acres is wetland. Basically, everything off the map is wet. We're home to three nonprofits, the Watershed Center, Maritime Heritage Alliance, actually four nonprofits, Maritime Heritage Alliance, Great Lakes Children's Museum, Inland Seas does some programming on our site, and Traverse Area Community Sailing also has taken up a little residency there as well. I'm actually going to be meeting with some of their leadership later today about increasing their presence on site. I just thought it might be a nice opportunity, after talking with Chad, to come talk to you about kind of what we've been up to and where we're going. I'm not here to ask you for anything, I just wanted to let you know what's going on there. What you see there is basically the site, not exactly as it stands now. That's our pier development plan off to the right on the east side of M22. That has not come to fruition yet, but thanks to a grant that we recently got from the MEDC, we're well, we're on our way to seeing that become a reality. And let me back up just a little bit. About this time last year, Rotary Camps and Services and Rotary Charities decided to kind of spin off the Discovery Center and have that be its own entity, and they had some, they asked the members of the community to serve on the board, some militaries to serve on the board. And then, once they were up and running in January, they worked on a job description, put out a job posting, and I applied, and luckily they hired me. So, we're now sort of a self-governing organization. There's been a lot of different plans and ideas for that whole site over the last, say, 12, 13 years. What our new board decided to do is really put on hold any planning or anything on the west side of M22, and really focus on the pier, and really try to develop that into a nice park and park-like destination for folks, both for, not just our partners to provide programming on the site, but for the general public too. The mission of the Discovery Center is to connect people of all needs and abilities to fresh water through recreation, education, history, and exploration. We don't provide any programming ourselves, we don't do any, you know, active programming, we rely on all of our partners on site to do that. And so we thought, "Let's, let's focus on, on the pier, develop that in a way where they can do more programming to more, a wider, wider spectrum of the population, and also make sure that the public feels welcome to there as well." The next slide you're going to see is, you're going to question whether or not I made it through the fourth grade. So, what this is, is kind of my current funding status, and I'm going to get up there for a sec just to step you through this. The green highlights the area that we've got money to accomplish right now, like the grant from the MEDC, we have about $2 million, and that allows us to dredge out this channel. Right now, this is all land, right here, so, and there's really just a floating dock here, and one little pier here, and a thing, kind of a dock there that we, in pretty rough shape. All that's coming out now this fall. We were able to work with MOLHAN, and they gave us a very competitive bid to do all the dredging this fall and early winter. So this will all be done in terms of the dredging, and then the revenge work to hold back the land, obviously. We also have money to buy this floating dock structure where all the tall ships will end up. We have a grant right now into the federal government for this. It's a dock, but it's also what they call a wave, a tenueater to help make sure that this stays protected harbor. This will hold 26, 26-foot transient boats, so it'll help with transient boat demand. We feel pretty good about this grant, it's for about $700,000. I won't know about that until next year. This little area here is for tax, for Traverse Area Community Sailing. Right now, their west bay home is at the Out Club, and they're pretty crowded there, and there's also a lot of out mall. At the Out Club, which doesn't necessarily, you know, blend well with the youth on site, so the Traverse Area Community Sailing is interested in having a little more programming up into our area for a couple of different reasons, but that was articulated as one. This area here, we have a grant in with, in partnership with Elmwood Township, and it doesn't look like much. It's a parking lot, a restroom facility, but what's really key here is this little structure right here. And this is a universally accessible boat lift, and it's really neat. If you go to the next slide, I'll show you the photo here. So what this does, they'll have a ramp line like this, so folks that might have mobility challenges can go from wheelchair onto this transfer ramp, down into a kayak, and then this launch, actually with, on their smartphone, they can push a couple of buttons, and then that whole thing will lower down into the water, and they can paddle out and go into the lake, or into the bay. We've got a grant right now into the state, so that'll be right here, trust them, and we're super excited about that. If you go back one more slide, there we go. Some of the cost savings that we're seeing with this competitive grant, or competitive bid that we got from MOLHAN might even allow us to put in these docks and slips here for more seasonal boats. One idea that's been talked about has been adding charter fishermen on site that not only would provide the general public with charter, you know, paid charter fishing, but also partner with some nonprofit organizations, and allow people that might otherwise have an opportunity to do charter fishing, to do charter fishing, and provide some discounted rent on our slips for that, you know, partnering with Big Brothers and Big Sisters, disability network, real estate, that type of thing. So, we're not sure what this is going to look like yet, we're in the middle of strategic planning process right now, and Dale will inform what kinds of amenities we'd add on the pier itself, but that's where we're at right now.
Matt, do you want to just show them the Elmwood Township Bridge that we're building?
Oh, yeah. So that, yeah, this will happen this fall. This old bridge right here, this connects us to Elmwood Township Park. Right now, a lot of folks who use the park, do my office right here where the family video was used to be, will, they're very curious, they want to come over and look at the tall ships. They'll walk around here, and it's not very safe. They're just, they're getting really close to the road. We already got the permit, everything in hand to build this bridge, so it'll provide real safe pedestrian access for our site community park.
So, so along 22 right now, that looks like that's all green right now, that's all green space presently? So you're pretty much going to, and this is all parking over in the square, so it looks like maybe you're going to move some parking and have more green space out there instead?
Yeah, a little bit of both. So, right, so we've got with, with, we'll have some kind of rain gardens in here, and we're still in the final stage of engineering to deal with the stormwater management here. This may be more of a rain garden type of look, or the middle of that. We know we're going to need parking just because of the demand for the site, you know, with parking requirements. It's one of the things, we go back one slide, when we dredge this harbor out, we're going to end up with about 19,000 cubic yards of sand. It's clean. We have this old pole storage lot that came with the dock when we bought that from Traverse Light Power. The plan is to actually deposit as much of that sand that we can here, so we know some will have to be trucked off, and then create parking here. This doesn't look like this right now. And we're working with them, about a possible relocation of that pedestrian crossing demand and moving it up there.
So that'll take some filling permit to move this sand over?
Yep. So, that's it.
Looks great.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Thank you, very nice.
Yeah, good luck with that. Thank you.
Finally, we have a birthday this month. Commissioner Sosilittle, a birthday on the 10th, I believe, right?
It is on the 10th.
That's right.
Happy 20th, Tom.
Sherry, birthday. For you, so happy birthday.
Well, thank you so much.
You don't have to share it.
I won't. Don't put it on my side.
Okay, so then that brings us to emergency management, 911 update.
Good morning. Been a few years since I've given a department update, so it's nice to be able to run through this little slideshow for you, I'll try to keep it as quick as possible, you know, you do have an agenda. But on the second page, it's always nice for me to put the faces to the voices behind the radio and the phone. So these are the 10 dispatches that we have employed at Lillinau County Dispatch. You see two of them have been here longer than I have, and I'm responsible for hiring the bottom four. So we're, we're very happy with our crew, and they're a very, very close-knit group, and everything progresses forward as we need it to. and everything progresses forward as we need it to. On the next page is a snapshot of our 911 activity. We have the 911 calls, all our non-emergency calls, and all the calls that we dispatch for police, fire, and ambulance. And on the next...
How does it look compared to past?
Um, the, well, actually, the, the non-emergency calls are up just a tick, and the 911 calls are down just a tick. The calls dispatched kind of fluctuate from year to year. It's kind of average around 12,000, so a little below average, I would say.
So, for, for all that work, I just want to, I just want to remark that when people talk about the Enterprise newspaper, that is their favorite section, is the dispatch log, so...
Ninety-nine percent of those entries in the dispatch blotter are the non-emergency calls.
Yeah, they are.
Did you hear some WTC on Marah Delash on Friday morning? He usually reads the highlights of the blotter.
That's why they're so fun, is that why that column's so fun, is because they're non-emergency.
Well, Amy is really on top of it, so she, she always gets on me if it's not out in a timely matter, so she's, she's as much to be appreciative for that as anybody. But the Lealaw County Top 10, these are the top 10 incidents that we handle throughout the year. Obviously, traffic stops, so the deputies are out there being proactive. Medical calls, you know, unsurprisingly, is number two. So, that, that encompasses all the emergency and non-emergency calls that we have for EMS. And then, you know, it goes down to, you know, suspicious incidents in people and vehicles, all the way down to 911 hangups. Car deer accidents were down just a little bit this year, but it's kind of a...
I wanted to say that I was one of the 911 hangups. We talked about it last week, and I'm serious. I am concerned about the parks where we don't have access to 911 services. And I talked to Matt last week about trying to figure out a solution to provide 911 call boxes at parks where we have in the county that we don't have cell service. We had an incident at Peterson Park, and it was a serious incident, but we couldn't get through until somebody ran up the hill and made a call. Well, I do think that's a priority that we ought to look at, some sort of a solution.
Yeah, there are, there are some options. We have looked at that in the past, as we discussed, so we can, we can explore that as we move forward. So, pre-event planning takes up a lot of our time. We plan for 57 events within the timeframe since, you know, last October. Just a snapshot, of course, the Cedar Poker Fest is our, our big festival inside the county. It's multiple days, multiple resources every day that we have to plan for. But, you know, it comes down to even the Hops Festival this weekend in Empire. It's a very well-planned event. It's one that we look forward to every year. Gets easier and easier to plan for. And then, we get down to National Cherry Festival. We, we play a large role in that because we get a lot of overflow from the Cherry Festival. We operate as backup communications for Grand Travis County. We take our command vehicle down to Elmwood Fire, and we station it there for a week, and we, we man that during the air shows and the fireworks, in case something were to happen. And that's as close as to show centers I would like to be. I don't like to be downtown anymore than anybody else, so, yep, that's, I feel good about that. On September, it was two weekends ago, the Betsy Valley Ride for Reading, it was an organized motorcycle ride, it was the first one that we had. And it actually was a benefit for the district library in Thompsonville. Traverse City Motorcycle Patrol actually led the ra, I shouldn't say a race, the ride. And it went up through Frankfurt and Empire. They stopped at the National Park Service for water and gas if they needed it, and then they continued up to Glen Harbor, and then back down to Thompsonville. And Benzy County unfortunately is in a transition with their emergency managers, so the responsibility for security fell on me, which was completely okay. And I feel that we put together a very good plan. The event organizers were extremely impressed. And Traverse City Motorcycle Patrol were extremely happy by the turn-by-turn directions because they don't get out to Benzy County, they don't get out to Lealaw County on their motorcycles, so it was good for them to have. So, it is a positive attribute of our department that we do these, and we continue to do them for the benefit of our emergency services personnel. So, within the, the last year, we've had deployments and exercises. We do station the comm vehicle out at the Empire Airport for the snowmobile drag race event. That's to honor Roy Tejon, who lost his life there, snowmobile. So, we like to have a presence there just to, because it is kind of a remote area of the, of the county. We had an interesting opportunity last January to walk through a structure fire with a fire investigator from the Michigan State Police. We got to kind of look at, see what, what is important, and we went through there with Sutton's Bay Fire, and there were representatives from Grand Travis Metro Fire there. Grand Travis Band Fire was there. We just got to see their investigative techniques. That was extremely eye-opening. It kind of helps us communicate to dispatchers for, you know, what, what to communicate with the, with the fire department on scene, so it was an excellent opportunity. We were able to provide active shooter training to the MSU Extension Office here in the building. They found it very beneficial. It was, it was hands-on, personal, and, you know, gave them tips on, on what to do with an open office. You know, that's something that all of the offices here struggle with, and it's just good to be able to reach out and, and provide that. And moving on, we, we have our annual countywide tornado drill every April. This past year, we were able to do it at Pathfinder School. It's an alternative school. It's not our typical, you know, public school. Age ranges are a lot younger than what we're used to, but the kids and the staff did extremely well. They've, they've never really had that kind of full-scale exercise before, and the kids, the kids were wonderful. We always find that. And typically, we like to have high-school level juniors and seniors play the victims. We're able to kind of dial it down for the younger kids, but, you know, when you ask a kid to kind of act crazy and run wild, that was a perfect age group to have that happen. So, it was fun. It kind of threw the, the first responders for a loop when, when we had a couple of kids just go crazy and run through the woods and like, do I have to chase them? Yeah, you do. Yeah, nice little, nice little add for that. The Swimford Grand Travis Bay Event in August, that's an annual event. It's kind of unique because it's, it starts at Graylock Field Park, and it ends at the Traverse City Volleyball Courts on the beach. So, it actually spans two counties, and I take a proactive role in that as well, and I coordinate the safety for that event. So, I communicate with our marine patrols and the Coast Guard and on-scene volunteers. So, that's kind of a bigger event for us to be involved with every year. And we just, this past week, did school reunification training. We invited all the schools to come in for morning and afternoon sessions, kind of walk through a reunification process that we're going to be, you know, putting out with the schools. We're going to, we planned instead of the countywide tornado drill this April, to actually do tabletop exercises at each school to practice their reunification plans. It has been kind of a, a focus of school staff, you know, well, what do we do after the lockdown? Well, this is kind of along those lines, so it's going to practice their, their plans that they have in place, and give them an opportunity to improve and make their school plans much better for students, staff, and parents. So, on the next slide, kind of going along the same lines, we meet quarterly with school superintendents to discuss school safety and security. We have a good working relationship with the sheriff's office, and he takes an active role in these meetings. And it, we, we get good discussions. Every, every meeting, something comes out of it. We discuss real-life events that happen, we discuss lockdown drills that we've had, you know, questions that may come up. Do we use red and green cards under the door to let people know if there's anybody injured in the classroom? You know, just, should we do that and should we not? You know, we give them our recommendations, and, and they typically, they appreciate that, and we move forward as a team, so. A real good countywide collaborative effort with the schools moving forward. And every year, we, we work through 45 fire drills, so we have this, the kids all evacuate the school, then those are the easiest ones. Been doing it since forever, you know? Everybody knows what to do in a, in a tornado, in a fire drill. You know, it's a little different for tornado drills, they've changed from year to year. How do you shelter? You know, do you face the wall? Do you turn away from the wall? We're working on that to, to have it all work the same way in every school. And then, each school does at least three lockdown drills. And those are becoming more and more easy for the, the students and staff to handle, and it's getting to the point where we, we need to expand a little bit because lockdown drills are just that. They put the boot in the door, they lock down, and then two minutes later, they're back to teaching the class. Whereas, a real lockdown would be hours. It would take hours. So, we will explore different options to prolong and get better at our drilling ability with lockdown drills. And finally, the, the upgrade project that we've been toiling with since 2016, we are on the last step, so we did transition to the 800 megahertz radio system throughout the county. We now have an NG 911 capability with our phones in the dispatch center, and we are live with text to 911 as well. And starting October 15th, we start CAD administrative training with the new CAD system. That is going to be every week, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, eight to five. So, there's six of us, including the undersheriff, myself, Kelly, Lieutenant Kiesel, Lieutenant Roush. We're going to be very well occupied with this. So, we, we expect to be very well-versed, we, we expect the system to, to work very well for all of us, and be in a, a great tool moving forward, and hopefully, next year, by the time we get some data into the CAD system, be able to dazzle you with some, some graphics. So, it'll be good.
Commissioner Roush?
So, that the text 911 is complete, you said?
Yes.
So, right now, if I were to pick up my phone and text, two would be 911?
Yeah, just 911, send.
Send, no, no star, no?
Nope.
Okay, so, and then you get a text back, I expect?
Yes, it will, it will come back. It actually opens up a text session, if you will. And it keeps that session open for 20 minutes. So, if there's inactivity for 20 minutes, then it will go out. But typically, that's, that's, we respond to whatever caller it is, and then there's no response. And then, we have protocols in place and what we do from there, but...
Okay, you're good. So, how, this is, I might have missed it earlier, and I apologize, but how, how do we get that word out? How do people know now that that's unavailable? Especially, I'm guessing, children?
I did put it out to the, to the media when we went live. Nine and 10 came out and actually interviewed me on camera. I put it out to the, to the Enterprise and all our regular media. We can continue that messaging.
I was thinking, you know, online with the, the younger generations, if that's all they do.
Right, they do.
Commissioner Roush?
I know you've pushed the Smart 911, especially with the senior services. Is that going well, and what percentage of our population has signed up?
We're, we're still around 10% for sign up in Smart 911. We feel real good about the ones that have signed up. They seem to be very proactive with their online profiles. You know, it doesn't cost anything. Every six months, you'll get an email, go in there and verify all the information. Sometimes, that can be difficult for, you know, seniors who don't get on the internet that often, but for the most part, we feel good about that program. It's not costing us anything right now, which is fantastic, and, you know, we're just slowly progressing, but, yeah, I'd say that we're still about 10% of our county population.
Commissioner Roush?
I was just wondering how, with this new texting for our kids, is this, do the kids know they can text 911?
Typically, the kids do. You know, they see it on TV, they see it on their, on their social apps and all that. We haven't had a real issue with, you know, malicious text 911, abuse of 911 or anything along those lines. But, we, we have received them from school buses. You know, there will be kids on the bus that text 911, and, and it's more of an exploratory thing. But, yeah, the kids, I feel, do know that.
So, they know it's available to them if they find themselves in a situation where they can't make a phone call?
Yeah.
Okay.
Especially, you know, if they want to stay quiet.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is the lean line, is that coming along?
Uh, we're still in a, in a holding pattern. Getting with IT. IT's been working with Safety Net in order to establish the link between our center and Lansing Core Technologies in order to open everything up for us. I haven't heard back on, on the exact process of it, but we do have a checklist that, that needs to be followed, and everything should be checked off.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Then that would bring us to approval of our agenda. I do have one late addition. That would be, it's a release of the attorney-client privilege letter from last week concerning tokens. And the clerk has requested that we add that to our agenda, and I'd put it under 9D. Commissioner Roush?
Would you like to put it up under, like, 8, 8...
Two, I think.
8B, maybe?
8, 8...
Will we just be discussing it at the same time?
Yeah.
Okay, 8C.
All right, so 8A, will it still be underneath that?
Should be B.
Just add it to it?
And then, move B to C, okay.
Yeah, okay, that's a good idea. Any, any other? Commissioner Roush?
Move to approve the agenda as amended.
All who's in favor?
Aye.
All who's opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Commissioner Anzari had an emergency that he had to go, go on, and he said he'll try to get here if he can, but he sent, he sent a note through Laurel. So, yes.
We just passed a motion on the agenda, but maybe we should put item number one later in the agenda since...
We can give an update if it comes, because we have travel here vested also, so. And I've talked to Commissioner Anzari where we are, so I think we still can proceed.
We still have Tuesdays.
Yeah.
Okay, so then that brings us to public comment. Please, come forward.
Eric Lynn, Sutton's Bay Township. As most of you know, I'm a member of the Grand Travis Yacht Club. I'm also involved in Traverse Area Community Sailing. I was on the board of the Discovery Center for a number of years as the tax representative, and I have a little bone to pick with Mr. McDonough, I'm sorry that he left. The reason that tax is developing a relationship with the Discovery Pier is not because of alcohol at the yacht club. Alcohol is not served at the yacht club when the kids are there. The kids practice, the high school sailing team, junior high and high school sailing teams, practice there on Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday. Alcohol is served Wednesday and Friday evenings. We just had a regatta Saturday at the yacht club for the junior and senior high school sailing teams. We had about 55 or 60 kids from all over the state. It was a great regatta, and the yacht club provided a warm and friendly place for the kids to be when they weren't on the water, a kitchen to prepare the food, a place to serve it, changing rooms, and clean restrooms, which won't be available up at the Discovery Pier. So, I assume we'll continue to have our regattas at the yacht club and maintain our relationship with the yacht club. So, anyway, that's my...
Thank you. Setting the record. Thank you for the clarification.
Please, come forward.
Gwen Alguier, Cleveland Township. I would just like to extend an invitation to... You can't hear me.
Don't touch it.
Don't touch it, just talk about it. Okay. I would like to extend an invitation to all of you... I would like to extend an invitation to all of you hard-working commissioners and Chet, to the A Wing Center tonight to celebrate Indigenous Peoples' Day. We will have some very, very interesting speakers. I understand you each have the flyer. It's, this event itself is sponsored by the Leland County Democratic Party. However, and, I shouldn't say however, it should be a very interesting event that honors our neighbors. Actually, we're on their land, we're their neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment? Please come forward.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I haven't been here for a while. Gary Zamitas from Leland. You know, when you, sometime you go to a movie or you watch television and it says, "Warning, warning, warning." Well, I'll give you a warning. Political comments may enter into my talk. So, warning. This is a flyer that's been appearing around, all around the county. And I'd like to read it real quick. Early childhood services millage inform. Information you need to know. Be informed before you vote. All right, number one. The millage will raise the cost of living in Leland County for families with young children, making Leland County even more, even less affordable. It will raise cost for provided, excuse me, it will raise cost of providing more services for seniors as they are stressed and impacted by higher taxes. Number three, Leland County, this is interesting, ranks seventh out of eighty-three counties in the state for providing health services to our children. Good job. Our low-income children already receive these services. Next item, five years. The term of the five-year millage with only the first-year budget plan. The Board of Health has not requested or endorsed a millage for early childhood services. How will this three-point-six-million-dollar tax dollars be spent? Next item, public schools have eliminated Head Start due to lack of children. This is a vote for it and learn about it later, just like the Affordable Care Act. Please join us in creating a thoughtful and workable plan for our children. Vote no on November fifth, too much for too long, and so on. Paid for by concerned citizens of Leland County. It's interesting that a lot of people that support this also support abortion. That doesn't, that doesn't make sense in my mind. Doesn't make sense at all. Do you notice another comment? Do you notice that there's, around the country, there's a lot of communities that are running into financial difficulties and other difficulties? Where I came from, Chicago, is broke, been broke for years. I can look at other communities or cities, Detroit, these are with problems, Baltimore, Los Angeles, San Francisco, you know, New York, and so on and so forth. These are run by the Democratic Party for years. I hope Leland County doesn't become one of those ones that go broke trying to provide stuff that really may not be necessary or a duplication. Okay? This doesn't make sense to me. And one other thing. On the last day of man-made global warming, that was a joke. So was man-made global warming. So, thank you for your time. I think that we should think things through. I used to have a partner that would always say to me, "Have you thought this thing through all the way?" You know, we're worried about affordable housing and making this county affordable for people and everything, and now we're just continually raising taxes. In Leland, I've got more taxes because twenty-five million dollars for a school addition, then we got more taxes for an addition, something going on with our fire department, and all these taxes, and now we're going to do more and more and more. It's getting to a point where I couldn't move here if I wanted to move here now with my, I have a limited income, I'm on a fixed income, and I'm old. Happy birthday. Same birthday as my wife. All right, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to our agenda. And the first action item is a discussion concerning the road closure.
I've asked Trevor to cast to come and give us an update. And Trevor, they co-hosted a meeting a couple weeks ago that Commissioner Anzorbi, myself, Matt Anzorbi, undersheriff Morgan, was at. It was kind of a wrap-up on the Ironman activities. And why don't you start, then we can chime in afterwards?
Sure. Well, I'll just start by thanking you, the commissioners, and William and Chet for allowing me to come in and say a few words. In my estimation, the Ironman was a success. Pretty great event. Twenty-five hundred competitors came with roughly seven guests, stayed three nights, spent a lot of money, and had a good time exploring the area. In fact, the day after the event, I took some Ironman representatives out to the dunes and to Glen Arbor and to the wineries, and we saw people wearing their logoed gear from the Ironman race, wearing it proudly, their medals, their hats for finishing. So clearly, there was a lot of being spread throughout the region. Fifteen hundred-plus volunteers from across the area helped to put the event on. And tens of thousands of dollars have been given back in good works in our region. I'm estimating about seventy-five thousand dollars in total has been contributed back to local nonprofits through the event, including fourteen thousand dollars that came through Traverse City Tourism and the charity challenge that we did to help fundraise for five local nonprofits. So a lot of good came from the event. In a time where we've kind of been struggling, end of August has been more and more difficult financially for a lot of businesses in the region as more and more schools are starting before Labor Day across the state, across the country. We've hit a soft spot. The airport, I think, is a good example of that. They've been trying hard to infuse more business and interest into the end of August, and this proved to be a pretty nice shot in the arm to the airport for hoteliers, for restaurants, and the like. So a nice finale to the summertime for business, if you will. This was a first-time event. We learned a lot after getting one under the belt, if you will. We spent more than a year planning for the event. Had regular agency meetings that included Leland County agencies in Traverse City. Traverse City proper, the city was the host for those meetings. And we tried to design what we thought would be the best plan for the event. And I think in theory it was. I think there's a lot that can be improved upon. You don't necessarily know that until you try it, right? So some of the road closure issues that we have experienced or learned about can probably be rectified. Some of it's just communication, making sure everybody understands what's happening, make sure we're all on the same page. And I think that there's probably some modifications that can be made that make it even smoother and easier for next year from an operational side as well. The other thing that I know, having been running events for the better part of my professional career, is once you do it once, everybody kind of knows what it is, right? So I think despite all the marketing we do and all the press releases, and as vigilant as everyone was in trying to get the word out, clearly, there was a big segment in the community that didn't know it was going to happen. And they ran into traffic issues on their way to church, or on their way to work, or to the grocery store that potentially could have been avoided had we been able to communicate directly with them in advance on alternative routes. But I'm pretty sure if they hear the word "Ironman" next year, they're probably not going to make the same, take the same route, right? They're going to probably find alternatives, potentially stay home until after the race is over, I guess. But that aside, I think, you know, what you've been discussing or what I've been privy to through our debrief meetings and other communication I've had with Chet and directly with Tony, it, you know, it appears there's interest in trying to address process. And that's fine, and I'm not going to tell you what to do. And if you want to go down that road with the Attorney General, you know, that's your choice. I'll say what I said more than a year ago when I came to you the first time to tell you about the event is, I've got an open-door policy. My phone number is published. I'm willing to talk out anything. And I think Chet and I have a good enough relationship that we can talk through a lot of the issues that came up. I will say the positive feedback has been, has far outweighed the negative. But we need to address the negative, and we need to look at it and try to make it better for everyone. So you still have my commitment on that front. We're by no means trying to impose upon Leland County. It was never the intent. And the lines of communication are still open. If we need to have a meeting or try to help coordinate meetings to make things better in the future, that's fine. I'd rather not dwell too much on the past, learn from it, let's keep moving forward and make it better. So that's really what I wanted to share with you today, and of course, answer any questions that you have for me.
I can give an update from, because I've been talking to Commissioner Anzorbi quite a bit. If you notice the agenda item, when the original agenda came out, it says, "Ironman discussion is now road closure discussion." That's because Commissioner Anzorbi wanted to make it very clear. He has no issues with the Ironman. At the meeting we had two weeks ago, I think, he was convinced that the issue, his concerns are with Department of Transportation. So that's why it's now longer called an Ironman discussion. It's called a road closure discussion. So if Commissioner Anzorbi was here, he would verify that. So that's his issue now, and that's why it's called road closure discussion.
And I think that's fair, but I'll also say, this wouldn't be on the table if it wasn't for Ironman. So, you know, it's hard not to at least feel like we need to stay involved in this conversation.
Yeah, well, I think it's an important discussion, and if he was here, he'd say his issues now, after going at a meeting, I think you and him have talked numerous times, his issues are now with the Ironman event. He's not opposed to the event. He's opposed to the fact that the process was not followed, and you have the legal opinion and so forth. And I thought it was a fairly positive discussion we had. The Department of Transportation rep was maybe not on the same page as some of the other people in the room about the process. So that's why it's back on the agenda. And unfortunately, Commissioner Anzorbi is not here. But I thought that was actually, overall, a pretty good discussion we had a couple weeks ago. We had reps there from the state police, there were people from Long Lake Township, county officials, Benzie County people, the emergency management, nine-one-one from Benzie County was there. And I think the one thing that I got at the meeting, that everyone says an easy more dialogue. And the process needs to be followed and updated. And I think you're trying to set up a meeting that we can meet with Department of Transportation and resolve some of these issues maybe before next year. Trevor and I talked about they have a meeting with Department of Transportation, having Commissioner Anzorbi, having Chairman Moniker, myself, to talk to make sure we're all thinking the same for next year, maybe having the law enforcement and Matt involved too. So at least we all know where we are and what the process will be used. The road commission was at the meeting also, you know, they passed the resolution. They were never asked for the closure. There were three county roads that were closed, and that never went to them. There's a process in place. And so, I don't know, Matt or Steve, you want to add anything? You were at those meetings. You want to leave that meeting?
Well, not much. I think I don't try to prolong time in this phase of work, but there are some major things that have to be done if this continues on.
Commissioner Rousch.
I'm trying to take a deep breath, Trevor, because we have, we do have a problem. So we have a problem with the fact that while the race itself, it was a success. You have to say "but," because the sheriff's exactly right. There were some major problems. And in part of it, I'd say, is this attitude. Because for you to say, "Well, next year, plan on staying home." As I said a month ago, the race was just great for those who were involved in it and wanted to be involved in it. But we have lives and businesses also. So people shouldn't have to stay home because the race is going on. So that was our concern early on. So we went to one of the planning sessions and shared those concerns. And we were told at that planning session back in May that we would be able to get in and out of Leland County. So that people would be allowed to get in and out of our businesses. And that didn't happen. And I want to make sure that doesn't happen another year. So when people said, "Wow, I was so upset, I couldn't get to work," or "I was an hour late for work." Those are people that have lives in Leland County, and we were effectively cut off here. Anywhere that there was a state police trooper at a road, you could not get across that road. So it, that's the big "but" for another year. Maybe it was successful this year, but we had some major problems. What I have, I've heard, and I'm still hearing it from people who have felt free to share their concerns and complaints about what happened that race day, and they feel safe coming to me. And even just as of last weekend, I heard it. They said somebody, they just feel like somebody told them to stick it to Leland County because there's this idea that we told them not to come into this county, which is not true. So I think that what I haven't heard is an apology to all the people that couldn't get home from work, all the people that couldn't get to work, all the people that couldn't get to where they wanted to go because a race was going on. And you can say, "They were told the race was going on." Yes, we were told the race was going on. We were also told we would be able to get in and out of the county. And that wasn't the case. So I'm a little upset with that attitude that, you know, "Well, if you don't like it, just stay home next year." We shouldn't have to stay home next year. I know there was a lot of money spent all over the region. I've heard it. We've got some emails along that case, and that's all just fine. That, maybe perhaps one has planned. We can say the positives outweighing the negatives. For those that were affected, I'm not so sure that that is the case. So I'm kind of taking a hard line because people have been afraid to even speak up because they've been attacked, and especially socially, on social media. If they mention it, it's an immediate attack, rather than say, "Hey, let's find a solution for this." So that's why I say, that's what I'm saying, what I'm saying today is because we want an answer. Who told those state police officers not to let us across? I've heard now today, our resolution says one road, but I know there were three roads in Leland County. And Cedar, six fifty-one, doesn't stop at M seventy-two, it crosses M seventy-two, and that's still part of Leland County. And you couldn't get across. So that was road closure. Obviously, we know there were no permits to close those roads. We've said that. But we had an ambulance. With the ambulance on one side is seventy-two, and North Light on the other side is seventy-two. And the ambulance with a cardiac patient in the back was not allowed to cross seventy-two because a race was going on. So I want to ensure that, yes, have your race next year, it's all great. If it goes next year as we were told it would go this year, that's great. I just don't want to smooth this over and say, "Oh, it was a success, let's do it again next year." We've got to make sure somehow that those problems are smoothed out, that lives are still allowed to be led. That, as another neighbor of mine, emergency in Grand Rapids, two hours later than usual, get into Grand Rapids for a family emergency. And I just, my concerns are great. I think there's an apology due to Leland, and some answers too. So I do thank you for coming up here today, and I hope we can get some of those things.
May I? Yeah. Well, Commissioner Reddick, have a question.
Well, I just wanted to comment that in the area constituency that I represent was where the vehicle accident occurred with the officers. And the closure of the roads is definitely an issue. And I think, I think I quoted you when you said, "Maybe..." And I think, I think I quoted you when you said, maybe find other routes. You have to find other routes. And I think that it was a great event and I do want to see it go forward and I appreciate all the conversations that have taken place, you know, so far in that direction. And I just hope particularly with Michigan State Police and them that they can figure out alternate routes, that there won't be any road closures and that they understand that there are emergencies that take place or that they can see a gap in the event where they would allow, you know, traffic to cross.
Commissioner Rush.
As you know, Trevor, we're a peninsula. That creates challenges in its own. We only have so many roads in and out of this county and it was an imposition on a lot of our citizens in this county. So my question for you today is why haven't we looked at an alternative route, maybe south or east of Traverse City?
A lot of different routes. Can Matt, is that all right if I respond to that? I think a lot of different routes were looked at initially. This is the one that was collectively agreed upon. It's not to say it can't change. I never say never. I think that the ultimate goal is to try to make for a positive experience for as many people as possible, not just the competitors, but for the locals. You know, I try to make that clear.
Why not Long Lake?
What's that?
Why don't you just take it right out Front Street, get out Long Lake?
Well, we could talk about a lot of different, we probably drafted about a dozen different routes. So, you know, there's always options and I don't want to dig into it. That's really not my space. I'm not the race creator. I don't, I don't know how to do that part of it. I'm just here to talk with you guys.
Right, we appreciate that.
But I definitely would take the message back. I mean, don't think it's falling on deaf ears. Clearly, we, I'm a Leland resident. I mean, you know, I hear it too and I've taken probably a hundred calls myself personally. So, no, understood and, you know, we're looking at all possibilities.
Well, we appreciate that. We are happy that the event was successful. I think the community enjoyed it. We have a couple of snafus and I think that we will have a lot more voice next year on the issue when it comes to closing our roads. So thank you for your time here today.
Any other questions or anything?
May I just respond to Commissioner Laugner? I do apologize. And I can say that personally, but I'll also say I don't have to ask half of Traverse City tourism to anyone who was negatively affected. And I've done as much via email and phone to a number of people who've called my office. But I realize you probably get a lot more calls on that than I do. So, and I don't mean to trivialize the situation. I just know from experience that once people, once they've been through an event, they make different choices on how they want to interact with that. So maybe it's inappropriate for me to put it in a way that they should stay home, but they may want to stay home to avoid it no matter where it ends up, meaning as far as about, because it's still an event. It's still a big event regardless of the road closure part of it, just like Matt said with Cherry Festival. I don't want to get in the middle of that. You know, a lot of people don't want to be in that. So, and I get it, but we just got to find a way to coexist and make it good for all.
Commissioner Soder.
Trevor, I wanted to ask you, and you may not have this data, but how many people from Leland County like yourself participated?
And I wish I had that because, and I can forward it to you. I'll try to figure it out. I haven't broken it out by county, but we could probably figure that out.
I know we've talked about the challenges, which, you know, you won't be ignoring and we will have a strong voice next year and appreciate your tackling this. But also we need to recognize the accomplishments of our own residents who participated in this. I know I had a number of residents in my township that called and wrote to indicate, they were very appreciative and, hey, recognize the accomplishments that we've had. Yes, it needs work, but recognize that there's also a lot of healthy participation and we should recognize the residents in our township that did participate. So I am doing that.
Thank you. Anyone else? So I guess I'm just looking for a motion to move this forward to next week. So Mr. Anzorbi, yes, Commissioner Laugner?
Yes, I would make that motion.
Anybody to support it?
Support.
Yes, Commissioner West.
I'd like, I'm supporting going forward to next week. I certainly don't support going with a resolution to the Attorney General.
That's not the issue on the agenda.
Well, it's in our work package and I'm saying what I support is that I think we need to have further discussion. I like the event. I'm pleased that we're going to look at it for next year and fix the problems, but I think we can do it locally and with all people sitting down at the table. And I thank you and Chet and the other people that sat down to talk about issues. So thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion passes six zero.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. All right, so then that brings us to planning and community development, out of state travel. Trudy's here.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have a request before you for out of state travel for two individuals to attend the Brownfield Conference this year. That conference is held usually about every 18 months. I was signed up to attend the last one and then couldn't, so Chet went in my place. I think it's been 2015, I believe, since I went last. So at the Brownfield meeting in September, they recommended that I attend as well as one other member. The other member who would like to attend is Kathy Egan, the chair, and she's never attended a Brownfield conference. So on this EDS document, I've estimated for you about a $1,900 cost per person. I do have money in my budget that I've budgeted for out of state travel and I have not used any of that yet for this year. And this conference would also give me the opportunity to earn my continuing education credits, which I need to do every year for Certified Planner. So I was asking for two different motions, one where I could attend with costs coming out of my budget and the other with Kathy attending with costs coming out of the Brownfield budget.
Commissioner Soder.
I move to recommend to approve out of state travel for Director Gaila to attend the Brownfield 2019 conference, December 14th, excuse me, 10th through 14th in Los Angeles with not to exceed costs of $2,000 to come from the planning budget.
Second.
Commissioner Rush.
Trudy, how many days is this conference?
It runs the 11th through the, what's it, 11th through the 14th.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes six zero. Commissioner Soder.
I move to recommend approval of out of state travel for Brownfield member Kathy Egan to attend the Brownfield Conference 2019, running December 10th through 14th in Los Angeles with a not to exceed cost of $2,000 to come from the Brownfield budget.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven, six zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I bring up Mr. Poblo? We have the probate family court overlap request.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is just a request to request an overlap of time. Susan Richards is retiring and we're hoping to try to have somebody in by somewhere around the beginning of December. Susan will be done, I guess, more like around December 20th. I think originally we thought it was going to be December 31st, but now it's December 20th, so it's really only about three weeks. And we just feel it's necessary to have someone learn directly from her. She's an expert in her field and of course it also depends on the experience of the person that we hire. And we still have a position open until October 11th, so we are still receiving resumes and so we don't really know, you know, if we get somebody who's got a lot of experience and doesn't need that overlap, we won't use that overlap. We'll use as minimal amount as we possibly can. But also things are case specific, so there is some particulars that need to be dealt with.
Commissioner West.
So just to be clear, at this particular time, you really don't know how much time, overlap time you need because I noticed on this, it's a three or four week request. If we approve three weeks right now and the court finds it needs another week, can we not approve that down the road?
If you approve three now and then we need another week?
Right.
That would, I mean, be fine with me, but I think probably I can scratch the fourth week. I think we're already probably looking at just three weeks.
Okay, so that's good that we got a clarification on that.
Yeah, yeah.
So I would move to approve the probate court, no, I would recommend to the commission a motion to approve probate court, the ability to provide three, up to three weeks of overlap training for the new probate register as needed. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes six zero.
Thank you very much.
And that brings us to the Register of Deeds, the additional software license request for Tyler Technologies.
Hi. Good morning.
Good morning.
So with the installation of our new software, we realized that they shorted us one license in the agreement and so we really need five so that we have one at our computer on the counter. So this is just a request to pay for one more license for that computer.
Are they extending it at the same rate as the others?
Yes.
I would move to recommend to the Board of Commissioners to approve the purchase of an additional software license from Tyler Technologies Inc. for the Register of Deeds office in the amount of $2,750, funds to come from the automation fund ending in 970000.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes six zero. Thank you very much. So then that would bring us to equalization, approval of the Leland County apportionment report.
Laurie's teaching a class this week, Andrew's here, and she'll be here next week to give you an update. All of you received an email from a legal counsel with explanation, probably wondering what in the world that's about since you were not involved in the discussion. I'm not, usually they send us to myself, but for some reason they sent it to all of you and you're probably thinking, you know, anything about this.
Is that because we do their tax bills?
Well, there was a, let's say, a misunderstanding between the township and the county and how they can allocate tax numbers. Laurie did not agree with the opinion given by the township attorney. We talked to our legal counsel, therefore you received that email. Since that time, we've had very positive discussions. I talked yesterday twice to township attorney and the township supervisor and they understand the situation now, so we're on the same page there. The way Laurie was doing was the correct way. They, and a lot of townships go through some state, the law's a little confusing if you read one section of it, it states one thing, which the township was correct in, but they didn't read two paragraphs down that says any change in the military has to be reported to people. And so the positive things, based on that dialogue with the township officials and township legal counsel, we're on the same page here on that, so there's no controversy about that. So just want to clear that out.
Commissioner Reddick.
I would move to recommend to the Board of Commissioners, the Leland County Board of Commissioners, set a public hearing date for public input on the final draft of the 2020-2024 Leland County five-year, uh-oh.
That's a little.
Okay, I'm sorry. I take that back. I would recommend to the Board of Commissioners to approve the county apportionment report, L 4402, in our October session.
Support.
Thank you very much.
I think we should add to your presentation.
I think so too.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes six zero.
Thank you.
Good job. Good job.
All right, I would say we take a five minute break here. It's 10:30 and then we'll move on to our next, Benzie Health. I'd like to call this session back to order. First thing on the agenda would be Benzie Health District Department Digitization Software. Commissioner Reddick?
Yeah, the health board met last Thursday and the Commissioner Laugner recommended the approval of digitization of Leland County environmental health records, cost not to exceed $25,000 upon approval of funding by Leland County. And we have approved that funding for 2020 and I think that they're interested in getting started on this project as soon as possible. So I think that approval of the budget next Tuesday, that we might be able to work something out where we could start providing some of that funding to them. They've accepted a bid from Graphic Sciences in the amount of $20,950.09 and the other approximately $4,000 that we've approved will be used to go for part of the software and another piece of equipment that they'll need to use in the office there. So I just wanted to give a little update about that and I don't know if Commissioner Laugner has anything else you want to add or?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I addressed the concerns of the scanner itself, whether it would be used for just Leland, just Benzie, and they said it would be in the Benzie office to be used just for, I'm sorry, in the Leland County Health Department office, just to be used for Leland County records. So they said there was no problem keeping that separate. They are interested in getting going on the project, so if we did want to go ahead and do it this month, they would be, they would be more than happy to do that. They do want to use a graphic services contract. They had three different bids. We looked at those last month and they, they said that one was the best one. So that's about it.
Was there anything that we need to move forward or do anything for next week? I think we have, we already approved it for the next year's budget.
Right.
That's a question. Do you want to, do you want to, Paul, I did talk to the clerk and she said we could find the money if we wanted to do it yet this year.
So you want to do is take the same amount of money, but move some of it, as I understand, from 2020 to 2019, right?
Yeah, if that's possible. So I guess I would make that motion that on approval of the budget next week, that we move a portion of the money or what is necessary to get the project moving, that would be approved.
I suggest you just move this forward to next week and I can let the clerk get the proper language. Instead of 2020 budget, which is on your agenda next week, I mean, for the hearing, this would be a separate action to basically allocate some funds this year, but that would reduce the amount for 2020, right?
Right.
Right. If you move it forward, I can work on the clerk on that.
Okay. Motion to move it forward.
Forward.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes six zero.
Okay, and as part of the discussion, I just wanted to draw everyone's attention to the circle of blue post that we all received that talks about out of sight, often neglected. Michigan's more than 1 million septic systems are overlooked, help in environmental risk for the state's groundwater, rivers and lakes and the people who use them. So in my district, all the townships, Empire is now joined with Cleveland and Glen Harbor in addition to Empire Village to have septic ordinances. And I am still, you know, encouraging the rest of the county to come along with this and I'd like to see a countywide ordinance. We know that the state has been talking about this for, I don't know, 20, 20 or more years. We're the only state in the country that doesn't have any septic regulations and the time is overdue. And there's also a problem, as we know, with community systems and PFAS and the PFAS also exists in the septic area as well. So we just, we need some regulations and we need to, you know, keep moving, moving forward with that. So I would encourage you again to go back and reread that circle of blue piece that was all forward to all of us.
I mean, is this, are you, is this the set of goals? Because that was, I mean, we had that on the agenda under goals.
I guess I went over a little bit onto the other area.
But we'll be back at that, right?
Well, that's what I wondered, are we going to then, I guess, do it again then? Will we go, okay?
We'll have another little review then. I don't have more to say.
All right. So, all right, so now we move to move forward to park and recreation. And then Commissioner West.
I move to recommend to the Leland County Board of Commissioners to set up
I move to recommend to the Leland County Board of Commissioners to set a public hearing date for public input on the final draft of the 2024 Leland County five-year Parks, Recreation, Greenways, and Open Space Plan for Tuesday, December 10, 2019, at 9:30 a.m.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes six zero. All right, very good. Now it brings us to the sheriff's proposal on uniform and gun allowance. Is the clerk here? No.
Why does clerk have to be here for this?
Well, she usually presents this.
It's her office.
Yeah.
Would you like the motion while we're reading for the?
Sure.
For the clerk, it's, because it's my understanding, as I read it, it's, well, it does, it's the same. So I'd move to recommend to the Board of Commissioners to approve the uniform and gun allowance for the following non-union personnel through payroll with appropriate taxes withheld if receipts are not provided. Sheriff, $100 gun, $575 uniform for a total of $675. Under sheriff, $100 gun, $575 uniform for a total of $675. Court bailiff, $150 for a uniform, two court bailiffs at $50 uniforms each, expenses from ending in 742-000. Marine deputies, one senior officer, $150, three junior officers, $100 each for a total of $300, expenses from ending in 742-000.
Second.
Commissioner Laugner.
Again, remind me, because it's been a little while since we've said, the $100 gun allowance is, we purchased the weapons, correct? And then is the allowance for the upkeep of, remind me, why don't we do that? These come before you, unlike the others, because these are not part of the union contracts. It's stated in the union contracts for all the others.
Right.
The ones that are getting the gun allowance through this would be the sheriff and the undersheriff, and it's historical, and it is for the maintenance and the cleaning, has always been mine, the maintaining of the weapon.
Okay.
Any other, any other questions?
So is this is?
Go ahead.
Is this same as last year, then?
It is, we had a couple more.
Marines?
Junior officers under the Marines, so I talked to the undersheriff when I was putting this together, and it's consistent. And we did have more bailiffs, I think last year we just had, we had one deputy Ken Lady, and then we had Deputy Henry Way, and now we've got three total, and so we have the senior and then the two others. Gentlemen.
Okay, any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes six zero. So then this brings us to, to the credit card update, and then also we were going to do the attorney-client privilege FOIA release at this time.
Can I do the attorney-client privilege first?
Sure.
It's not to discuss the actual attorney-client privilege letter. It was revised on September 20th to correct two type of graphical errors. This attorney-client privilege letter was addressed to me. The Cole Stoker is counsel for the Board of Commissioners, and the elected officials work under that umbrella. Because it is with me, there is the thought that I can waive it, there's also the thought that since you as the Board of Commissioners were copied on it, that Cole Stoker feels it would be prudent to have your support to release this via a pending FOIA request and to waive the privilege.
Commissioner.
I move to release the attorney's, the attorney's opinion on the FOIA, on the credit card issue as a part of the FOIA request.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes six zero. So then, then that would bring us to the, an update on the credit card unpaid invoice.
Well, the Board of Commissioners voted last month to not pay the invoice, which is within their authority to do so. As of today, having spoken with the law firm, they have still said verbally to, for the county not to pay it, as we have the opinion from the auditors and the legal. I have since also corresponded, and I'm waiting to hear back from the director, it's not necessary, but I have done it, the director of the local audit division in Lansing. And so he has all of the information, I'm sure I'll be calling back soon. There isn't any reason to think it won't be consistent, so the invoice is still sitting there.
Would I be allowed to say anything?
If you want, yes.
If you don't mind.
Come on up there, yeah, sure. I just want to give a little clarification if I could, because I just, some things I don't understand. When, when we were around the table discussing this project, the sheriff brought up, and we all thought it was a great idea, good community relations, good thing to do. And the sheriff actually brought up, you know, like, you know, maybe there should be a different way that we pay for these things. And in my past experience, I've dealt with these things before, I've never known it to be an issue. We have, we have other things in the agency that we give away periodically to people that are bought by the county, we have little stars for kids, and they're not given to everybody, they're given when it's appropriate or at a function or something like that. So it never crossed my mind that this was going to be an issue. And I told the sheriff, this isn't a problem, we just take it out of our operating, and it'll be a good program. Apparently, it's a problem. And so we discussed, okay, well, if it's a problem, then, okay, they're, they'll be available to everybody, we'll put them in a dish out front, and we'll give them away until they're gone. And now I'm told, well, that's not going to solve the problem. To me, that, I can't wrap my head around the fact that the county is not paying a credit card bill, which I would assume you're incurring fees or whatever, and we're willing to say, okay, well, we'll change our program to make it fit the, what's required, I guess. And that's not good enough. I don't understand that. So I'm sorry that this has happened and is costing the county money, because that's certainly not our intent. Our intent was to put in place a program that we thought was going to be something good for the agency and the county, and certainly wasn't to benefit anybody within our agency, so. That's, I just wanted to say that. Commissioner, right?
You know, we all received a coin, we all accepted the coins, we all thought it was a wonderful idea, you know, when the sheriff passed those out. In my experience, you know, being on the fire department, we did much the same things, you know, we gave trinkets, you might say, to different people out there in the field that we worked with or victims of an accident. And so we understand that the intent was in a, it was not a devious intent. Now we have to go to the subject of, you know, what are the rules, and how do we, how do we go about the rules? And I'm frankly quite surprised that we couldn't have solved this issue without it becoming a public spectacle, disrespecting those who work in our clerk's department and those who work in our sheriff's department. So I'm very disappointed that the two parties couldn't come to some sort of common ground on this. With that said, I'm sure that each side will find out what the rules of play are in this little scenario, and hopefully the two sides will come to some sort of agreement so we can move beyond this.
Commissioner West.
Yeah, I, I don't think it's the two sides, and I, I, we, in our update, we heard about a conflict or a disagreement between the sheriff's office and the clerk's office, but it's really an issue about our budget rules. And I think we solve it by making sure that the auditor and our attorney is satisfied with whatever we finally end up doing. And the last time we talked about this, we said, whatever solution it is, we just want to make sure that the auditor and our attorney agreed with it. But I think we, I think we must stop calling it an issue between the clerk and the sheriff, and talk about it as an issue about whether or not we're following our budget rules and our purchasing rules. Thank you.
Commissioner Laugner.
Yeah, I think that's a good point, because we do, we are the ones who set the budget rules, and, and probably ultimately, you know, the claims and accounts, and they're our responsibility. So that being said, you know, Steve, you're absolutely right, and as Deborah said, we, it comes from the heart, it's a great idea. Problem is, fast forward to today, October 1st, and we've got this bill that, that we can't pay without really going against all that. But, you know, I'd be willing to pass the hat, if we could pass the hat and, and, I mean, if I, shoot, at this table, if we'd all pitch in $25, there's $200 of it, and you could still have the great token program that you want to have, there may be some others that'll donate and just pay for it, and if it's not paid for with tax, pay or dollars, the program could continue, and I'd certainly be willing to do that.
I think the issue may resolve itself based what our attorney told, talked to us, and the sheriff and I talked to Mr. Cole, the clerk and I talked to Mr. Cole. Both of them have forwarded this issue to Department of Treasury for ruling, and so we're hoping that they will respond quickly with this, and whatever they rule, we will, of course, abide by that and go forward. So Department of Treasury, which has the authority, as I understand from Mr. Cole and from our auditor, to make a decision, it's a budget issue. If they rule that it's payable, I'm sure we will pay the bill and go forward. If they rule it's not a legitimate expense, it's not the intent, that never was the issue. There's no question that there's no negative intent. It's whether the state followed, there was an issue, it all goes back to 2002, when there was an Intermountain School District that was misappropriated funds for personal use. And the state has all these new guidelines, to the point where technically we cannot buy condolence card or sympathy card with county fund when someone passes away. We cannot provide a retirement party, we cannot buy flowers. You know, there's a minor things, you know, spend $4 on a sympathy card, sounds minor and very appropriate, but there's been cases where they have ruled against that. So I'm hoping, since both sides have submitted the information, Department of Treasury, that person will make a decision here quickly, and we can go forward and move on. It's not a personal thing, I'm hoping, there's nobody that's questioned the intent of the coins, I don't think, it's just a matter of whether state guidelines were followed. And there have been cases where the state has ruled against minor purchases, too. So we don't know how they're ruling this. I think the process has been followed, all the mission, I believe all the mission has been forwarded from both of you, right? Sheriff, I believe you talked to the Treasury Department, I know, Michelle, you've talked to the Treasury Department, let's see what they ruled here, and hopefully they'll rule quickly, and we could all move on and go forward. Yes, I'm sorry.
So beyond that, I have contacted State Attorney General's Office, asked them for a ruling on it. Treasury, a multitude of people I spoke with about this and that explained everything, and so I went to Attorney General's Office, and I'm not sure the board has heard the whole story. I kind of was blindsided by this whole thing, very taken back by it. We buy these stickers, either from the admin staff in gold or silver from the deputies. When we're out, we go and speak to kids in schools, we buy a roll of 5,000 of them for X amount of dollars, and you put them on the kids, and you talk to them, it's a public relations gesture. When we speak in schools with our dog, you've all seen the Nico cards, we have a series of three cards, and each one has a different Nico's tip, one of them not to text and drive, one of them don't use drugs or alcohol, the other one, be your own person, we're planning coming out with more. This is the exact same thing as what this is. These are not given out to everybody, these are given out to kids, and we speak to them. Tickets, we buy these with public money, we don't give everybody a ticket, we give them as needed. Business cards, I don't just have a bowl of them sitting out, if you want to know how to contact me, whatever, I give them a business card. A lot of other agencies are using things, these are about 60 cents a piece from Grand Travers County and from Antrim, where it has the sheriff's name on them or whatever, and it's basically, I personally, I don't self-promote at all, I've never put my name on anything in seven years as sheriff. So I thought these were a little too expensive, again, these are done, I guess, in a public relations gesture to kids. We also had a donation of several hundred Beanie Babies, which each deputy has about 25 in the car, and when a child is molested, or there's a fatal car accident, a parent's involved, or the child is being abused, we'll often give these to the kids, they hug them up, and they keep them with them. And again, we only give these out to people as needed, they're not just a bowl of them sitting there. However, when this objection was first made by the county clerk to me, she said, you didn't follow the right process, you can't do those, and I said, what do you mean? Well, if they're available to everybody, you could do it. And I asked her about the ink pens that the clerk has with her name on them, and she's done me several times with public funds, and to me, I don't advertise, I said, what's the difference between this and this? And she said, well, if they're available to everybody, then it'd be okay, but since you're going to give them to people in a reward sense. And I have copies of that county board policy on the use of funds, and understand, at no time do we ever try to work around things or try to go outside your wishes. And this is why I've approached Attorney General's Office for a ruling on this. I think it's absolutely ridiculous, we're discussing it, I'm embarrassed for the sheriff's office, I'm embarrassed for the clerk's office. I didn't start this, but I intend to follow through with it. The chips themselves, if we have to resolve this, and I spoke with the county administrator about this, as well as the clerk, when she originally made the suggestion, if they're available to everybody, then it's not a problem, such as her ink pens that sit on the counter. So we're willing to put them in a bowl, we gave every deputy, either 10 or 12 of them, and they're to give them to people as they do nice things, like provide first aid at car accidents, help someone whose boat is sinking, put the people on their boat, change a tire for a mom and her kids along the road in the wintertime, people stop, and when you see people do the nice thing, we always, it's easy to say, practice random acts of kindness, and do things without accolades when no one else is looking. It's easy to say that, it's hard to follow through, apparently, because when we tried to do that, it became an issue. So I did want to clarify that, yes, I did contact four people in Treasury, and I was referred to Attorney General's Office when I told what I think is the whole story, that this is not unusual to give things away, and we commonly do this, and if it was an issue, I would like in the future for anybody who had an issue with it to come to us and say, hey, maybe you shouldn't do that, we'll take care of it, and if it's an issue, let us know, and we're not here to create conflict. Okay, I can personally afford to buy all these, it's a $500 bill, these cost 50 cents each. If the 55 cent stamp goes on a thank you letter, which I commonly write to people when they help out at things like accidents and drownings, and they do things, I will commonly write them a handwritten note with one of my business cards signed saying, thank you very much, you're a good citizen, you did a really nice thing today for someone you didn't know, when you changed that tire, you saved that person from drowning, is such a trite thing to even be in here discussing that. So I'm embarrassed about that, but I'm going to stick to my guns, and I'm going to say that this is a common practice, and again, agencies surrounding us do this and much more, and it was never done with my name on it for any personal progress, or any personal election thing or anything like that. It was done in the light of, what can we do to them, good people? So I feel I needed to get that out, and also chat to add on, I know I spoke for Treasury, I went to Attorney General. And again, if this can be solved easily by putting a big bowl on our front counter, and we'll throw the chips in there, and when they're gone, they're gone, fine, it won't buy anymore. So we're not here to cause problems for the board, for the clerk's office, or anybody, but I felt kind of blindsided by this, and I think it was a cheap shot, frankly.
Yeah, see, this is the first time I've heard that you'll give them out to everyone.
Absolutely.
You know, and I think if that would have been done to start with, that this whole thing would have been avoided. So, and maybe this can be now, if you do that, but you probably, I mean, I've got the memo where you say it's only for certain people, and I, you know, and I have that with me today. with me today. So you're mixing things up, because, you know, you talk about those things are donated, but, so if they're donated, that's fine, you can give them out. But if we pay for them, you have to give them to the public, just like we have coffee here. We can't say only certain people who behave a certain way can have coffee. If there's coffee, it's for everyone that's here. So that's the idea of public funds. It's for, if you're going to do it, we need to do it. And I don't think, I like your idea, and I admit it, but it's trouble when we start buying it only for special people.
Let me explain that. So we don't just go down the road with a big roll of these things, sticking them on kids' shirts.
But you don't stop those from any children. If a child wants one, you give them to them.
We don't.
And that's the thing.
That is true.
That's the difference, you know, like the Nico cards, I think those are even donated. So you can give those out, that's the same thing, the little wolf dog or whatever are donated, sort of.
I agree, interesting, but I correct that. But again, what I would say is, in no time did I say these were donated. These are what we consider normal stuff to buy for public relations and goodwill and so forth. So I would suggest, and I would be fine with not buying any more of these in the future, that we put them in a bowl and give them away and be done with the issue. Shouldn't have taken this much time, and I'm sorry you got dragged into this. This is not the first time these things have happened, and I will do my best to follow these rules at all times. At no time do we self-promote. You will not, you will not see us promoting, it's not what this is about. So I understand your point totally. And again, when the clerk said to me when she first had an issue with it, that if you had given away to everybody, it wouldn't be a problem, and she basically ran with the ball from there, whereas if that was an issue with the board and administrator and I talked about it, then we'll just put them in a bowl and give them away. I'm not, I'm not here to cause controversy. So that's the only thing, Commissioner Bonnick, that I would say is different on that. We on a regular basis buy things like this. And when I sent that letter out, I want to explain that, the letter went to the deputies because I didn't want people reaching the bag, filling their pockets with them, giving them to everybody they know, but it doesn't make the point of what we're trying to do, just like, we don't just sit at a street corner and get Nico cards out. We, when we put a program on a school, we'll talk about drug education at one program, and Greg from Cole, and Nico do a great job of that. Another one will be on texting and driving. So those kids in that class, not everybody at, you know, Gun Lake Elementary School gets one. And that's my point of saying that they're not to be given out willy-nilly. We were trying to give these out where it mattered, just like we do with the Nico cards and everything. So I want you to know where our mens rea was, our mindset on that, and that was in that we thought it was a good PR plan. And again, if we can settle this by putting them in a bowl, I'm willing on my end, so that'll be your decision.
Yes.
After the last meeting, because it was raised, and all of you had discussed it, as did Chad and I, the administrator did talk to the attorney about just putting these out into a bowl, and he said that will not suffice to change the course of action, given the original intent of the purchase, to change the course of event after it's pointed out does not mitigate the issue at hand.
As far as sheriff, I did call the attorney and our auditors, asking if we could just do that to solve that. I thought it was a fair solution, but because it was done, and because of the memo, they both said it's, that's not that simple. So I really think we need to wait till a ruling from the Treasury Department on the purchase, it's not a personal thing.
Can we wait for the Attorney General, which...
Well, both our attorney and our CPA says it's a decision of the Treasury Department, not the Attorney General. But whatever information we get, I'm just telling the various, so whatever information you get, Michelle, whatever information you get, we'll, of course, pass on to the Board of Commissioners.
When I spoke with our county attorney, and I hope we don't get an additional bill for this, like we did for several other things recently, spoke with the county attorney, he hadn't heard my side at all, on why we purchased them, what the intent was or anything. He had already rendered an opinion, which he said was a parallel type of opinion, not a direct opinion, that he already agreed with the treasurer, I'm sorry, not the treasurer, the auditor, who was approached by the clerk. And again, it was not, let's sit down and have a meeting with the administrator, the auditor, clerk, and do this. This was done in abstention with me, and then it went from there to the Treasury. And at that time, I felt like, in talking with the Treasury people, I felt like, and when I spoke with Peter Cole, our attorney, he had, I said, well, you've kind of rendered an opinion on this, have you heard my side of it? He said, well, it's not really an opinion, I'm just agreeing with him. Well, I don't know what an opinion is if that isn't. And so I'm looking at it as, this is costing the county money if this goes to litigation, and it just doesn't make much sense to me. So that's all I'm going to say about it, I think you know it is. I agree with Chad, let's wait till we get rulings back, and hopefully we won't be in this situation again.
All right, so thank you very much. I think that, you know, we've heard about this, and we aren't going to take any action on it this time. So we move on to number nine, and the administration solutions for your contract.
Yeah, since the bill has opened, we've had four different cleaning companies here with probably mixed results. We have gone out for bids every time the prior contract expired, and we switch companies every single time. Last time we went out for bid, we had a local company, Solutions For You, that bid on it. I would say they have done the best job of any company that we've had here. I think two months ago, I asked permission just to bypass the bid process and potentially enter negotiations with them and a couple other companies on services. And so I've done that, and I have met with the owners of Solutions For You that are here, and they'll say a few words, but after many, many difficult hours of negotiations, and countless talks about chicken and chicken coops, we've come up with a proposal, a three year contract extension, at a rate increase of only 1.5% per year, which I thought was reasonable. The good news is, when there's no one in my office coming complaining about custodial services, that's always a good thing, and we've been very pleased with the service. But also, I think the people they have hired here, they've done a good job training them on how to be professional, how to answer questions, they're very positive people when they come in. Because when they walk in the building, it's almost a evening, people don't know whether they're county employees or open source companies and so forth. I got a lot of feedback when people say, well, those custodians are doing a really good job, and they're very friendly, and they told me where to go, and wouldn't room meetings and everything. So it was a positive thing. So I want you to come forward, introduce yourself, and you're local, you're not far from here.
Hello, I'm Leanne.
I'm Steve Fordice.
President.
Husband and vice president. Now, it is, you know, custodial work is not glamorous or anything like that, but we live two miles, as a crow flies from here, we're local residents, and we take pride in what we do, giving the right people to do it. Lelandon is a beautiful county, and we want the government center and the law enforcement center to reflect that. When the public comes in, it reflects on not only our job, but the entire county. And so if you can say, you know, like I said, it's not a glamorous thing, but we do take pride in it, and we appreciate the opportunity, we really do.
And typically, you'll see us in baseball hats and tennis.
Yes.
Flipping around here, no makeup on, and working very hard.
And I've personally seen the president and the husband and the vice president of the president cleaning themselves too.
Yes, we do.
In their shorts.
We're here.
It's very important, it's very important for owners to be hands-on in such an important responsibility. You know, you can't always entrust someone else to do the job, and we certainly have seen some of that here today, but we take pride in it, so.
Commissioner Law.
Yes, thank you. So this is, well, other than the holidays, it's, you see your own job, and you quite often hear in the late in the night, and sometimes it's during the day, but can you tell us, like, what, do you have an idea of what it, how much time, like, weekly, it takes to, we have three stories, to clean the three stories, and how many employees do you have?
It is roughly, what we are contracted to do weekly is 50 hours. It takes about 65.
I thought.
Okay. But to keep it within a reasonable budget, to keep us three gainfully employed and our other three employees, two of Lelandon County, two of Grand Travers County, we figured it, there's lots of things to do here, lots of things that get done that people don't see. You know, the wiping of the baseboards on your hands and knees, the wiping of the window sills when the fruit flies are in full bloom, I mean, there's all kinds of things. But we figure, this is our county too. So we do whatever we can do to keep it that way. But it is, it is, it is a big undertaking. We do work holidays. We do work weekends, and we do work late nights. So, did I answer your question?
Yes, you did, very well, thank you. I just have to say that it just seems like whenever you sweep the stairs, it won't be five minutes later, somebody will walk through with muddy boots on the stairs.
You're absolutely right.
Just like home. So I'm always turning around looking for a broom and a dustpan, because it drives me crazy, but, yeah, it's beautiful, you do a very good job, so thank you.
Thank you, and cobwebs are the same way. We'll go sooner than get cobwebs under the stair rails, and they'll move in the following weekend like unwanted in-laws. But, you know, we certainly strive, and we rotate. There are things that are priority, and there are things that go to the back burner. But for the most part, we feel like we have our hands in everything.
Commissioner.
I'd just like to compliment you on the great job that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
I've never looked around and thought, oh, they're not doing the cleaning very well.
Thank you.
It always looks really nice. And I admire your work ethic, and having been in a small business myself, I know that you can't ask any employee to do any job that you're not willing to do yourself.
You're absolutely right.
And you many times do do it yourself because that's what needs to be done, this is true.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Law.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Deborah had her hand up.
I was just going to make the recommendation.
Me too, so go ahead.
Yeah. I would recommend that the Lelandon Board of Commissioners renew an agreement between Lelandon County and Solutions For You LLC pending council review and approval.
Which is...
As presented.
Support.
All who's in favor?
Aye.
All who's opposed, motion passes six zero. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you.
We do appreciate it.
Thank you.
The other council drew up the contract, so we're good to go.
Eggs wanted, please check.
Okay, then that brings us then to 2020 Budget and Appropriations Act resolution.
Well, it's October, so it's that time of year for the budget, and we'll have a public hearing next week within the budget, I mean, within our normal board meeting, which you remember, we usually start the meeting, adjourn, have the public hearing, and then get back session, approve the budget, so that'll be part of the process. The ad was in the paper, was posted, the budget has available. The only feedback I received, as I mentioned in my update, was from a register of deeds, and she is professionally respectfully requesting that the position that in the 2020 budget is halftime, which by that position is 17 and a half hours. Some positions here, halftime is 40, are 40 hours and add to 20 hours, some are 35, so that's 17 and a half. That position, register of deeds, is 17.5, and she's requesting that be moved up to 21 hours by the week, or three days a week. I've done some research on it, what is the difference? It's not just the hours. 21 hours would equate to three full days, however, that person also would be eligible for pro-rated compensation, and those are, if employees more than 20 hours, the health insurance is 60% covered by the county, 40% is covered by the individual, just for the individual. If they have a family or are married, that'd be the responsibility of the employee. Also, at 21 hours, the person is pro-rated, their vacation time is 60%. So that's the difference here.
Mrs. Miller, do you have anything?
I just have a little statement, I guess. Yeah, I just understand that, you know, your job is to balance the budget, but because of the personal and professional hardship that this one staff person is, and that office is going to endure, yeah, I would just ask that you consider 21 hours, that way I can get her three full days. It will help with scheduling, and she is a valuable person to the county. I mean, it would be a loss, a great loss to the county to lose her, and I'm hoping with 21 hours, we can keep her.
So that's part of the discussion we can have next week here in the budget hearing, and we'll make the final decision on the budget. Because in the 2020 budget, we called that this was laid for 17.5 hours, and no benefits.
Can I get a clarification on what you said about, on the health insurance?
Yeah.
60, 40 for the employee and the family?
Would be the responsibility of the employee.
Oh, okay.
So it's only for the employee, and the average cost approximately for the 40% of the employee would be $170 per month that they would have to pay, if they choose to have the healthcare. They can choose not to have it.
Not eligible for pension?
No, all employees are eligible for pension.
Okay.
Part or full plan. It's pro-rated hours, either time.
Okay, I just want to make that clarification.
So we aren't taking action on that right now?
No, I'm just saying, this is the request, this is the only request I receive from the notice of the budget.
And I do hope that we take it under serious consideration. I think, you all know my position is, as was stated last time, I think we should keep this position and review it again, rather than take the attitude of cutting the position in half and then reviewing if it should be increased. It's much more difficult to find people to replace. Data says it's 40 to 75% of an annual salary if you're replacing someone, and if we might lose this person who is very, very good at her job, why not look...
She comes from title, she knows how to start, she knows the documents.
Why not consider keeping her in this year, and then looking at whether or not the automation and other things made a significant enough difference to not warrant having that fourth employee? So anyway, I just toss that out for consideration, so that when we take it up in the budget, we can look at it more closely.
At the time, because we have published the budget, anyone who wants to come in, the budget as presented has a halftime position.
Right.
So we really don't want to change it until next week.
No, I understand that.
Because it can be confusing, but obviously, that's something you can make next week.
Commissioner Rush.
And with what commissioner, so this little son, it seems to me that there was some correspondence in regards to reducing staffing levels in our...
Building?
Building, yes.
Yeah, that could, they're separate, but they could be, you know, and this will take effect January 1st. There may be some other vacancies here between now, and that person obviously would be eligible to apply for any positions, and so, you know, there are some potential options here available. But until we have the time, we don't want to commit anything. But there is some potential, we do have some retirements coming up, as you well know, some jobs have been already posted, which may lead to vacancies somewhere else. The job upstairs in the probate court has been posted, as you approved, so there may be some internal candidates for that. So it's hard to say how this will play out, but there is some potential there, yes.
I think the point that I was trying to make, though, is if we're not going to hire in the building department, and how that reflects on our budget, if we're not going to hire in that department, why would we not then consider keeping the staff person?
The challenge is that's a completely separate budget.
Okay.
Building, and that's their own separate fund, it's not general fund dollars.
You mean, we can't murder from them to...
Well, you, they could. You could, I mean, that's your decision.
Commissioner Lawson.
Sitting here, this is, this is a hard one, because you've got an employee typically can't make personnel decisions based upon wanting to do a favor for somebody. If she's good, let's find her another position, but this board took a long time in looking at needs and saying, we can fill this position, we can do this job with a halftime position. I think it's a slippery slope if we begin to see all of our part-time people and say, if we could just give them four more hours a week, we could get them insurance, and they'd get more vacation time, and that's nice, but that's not our responsibility, and nor can we really do that, I don't think. I would much rather take this employee, and let's find another spot, either now or in the near future, where they can continue to work for the county. But I'm uneasy making this, making a decision next week because this person needs the insurance. I just think we can't do that as a board. That's my thinking.
Commissioner Law.
Yes, thank you. I was going down that same road. We've been in this position before, and it's awfully hard to do, but we really can't look at personalities.
Well, that, but I, the Health Department, though, we could pull that out of 2020, you can, you don't have to necessarily change, or out of 2019, you don't necessarily have to change 2020 budget until down the road, you can make that amendment.
That's true.
And pull that, because that's just a contractual line item. Where with an employee, then you're talking all the adjustments to the healthcare and the MERS and the workers' comp and all of those, so. I would, it was just suggested that I just wait to see what your decision was in previous meetings before I suggest the twenty-one, and that this will be a time to do it, so that's why I'm asking.
Mr. Russell.
I just want to clarify what I was saying, because I'm not, Commissioner Wester made a good point, and we do make decisions based on what the needs are of the department, not on the individual. And I too would hate to see lose this individual. However, what I was referring to is, when we looked at this, we said, well, there's no software, there's efficiency that wasn't there before, we compared with other counties, it looked like we could reduce this position, and then we said, and we'll take another look at it next budget cycle, and if it isn't working, we can increase it. To me, that didn't make a lot of sense, because if you're trying to replace that person, particularly if we lose that person, then you've got a totally different situation. So, that's what I was trying to get at, is do you want to be in the position of saying, oops, we made a mistake, they really do need this person, or this position, I should say, not person, this position? And just think about that a little bit in terms of cutting it back, because once we've cut it, then if a person leaves, we're looking for an entirely new person, and that takes money. So, that was my only point.
During the budget process, we've discussed about how many cuts we have made and should we look at other departments. And really, when I went around, we have made, just looking at the last several years, if you start at the side of the building, right now, the structure code is down point four person from what was budgeted, and with early retirement, we may make some other changes. So, we're down there, look at planning, the housing position used to be full-time, now it's sixteen, twenty hours per week, that's a reduction. Go down with senior services, we eliminated the position there. You look at treasurer's office, they went from full-time P R E to a part-time P R E person. So, just off the top of my head, that's four offices that have made cuts in the last several years. So, we have made reductions, this is not the only office that has been impacted.
Yeah.
Commissioner Met.
I think that when we had our budget discussions, we did try to take the personal out of personnel. And it is unfortunate, you know, when you have an individual who's, you know, a valued employee, that this situation occurs, but I think that we kind of made our decision during that budget time, and that we have to really kind of stick to that right now.
If you subtract the person from the position, I know it's hard to do, it's small, we all know who we're talking about here and so forth, but I'll be the cautious optimist, and I think we may be able to resolve the person, she's a great employee, there's no doubt about that. We do have some retirements coming up, there's vacancies coming up, she certainly is eligible to apply for those. And so, if we separate the two, if you talk about the individual, I think we may have some options for her, and still stay within our budget. But, if you talk about the position, that's a separate dialogue, so we have a discussion. I know it's hard to do, keep the two separate, please, because for this person, and I've casually talked to her, Dorothy and I have talked, I've talked to other people, we do have some vacancies coming up here, we know one retirement, we may not fill it a forty percent, but there could be a potential for job sharing, we've done it before, you know, so I think there's some options for this person versus keep it separate from the position.
Is she interested in bowling?
There you go.
Commissioner Wester.
How many halftime positions do we have in the county?
If you look at the part, well, the clerk would know that.
I sent you that email.
Yeah.
And there was an inquiry a few weeks ago, when the Register of Deeds was coming before you, and you was asked for clarification, and I sent you that whole list, and I think there were probably at least fifteen positions on there.
How much?
Fifteen.
Yeah, that is my issue. If we do it, if we, if we moved all halftime positions to twenty-one, we are, that's a significant increase on our budget, we can't do it. So, we have to not do that, I think. We have to, a halftime position is a halftime position. If we did this on this position, I suspect the judge would come down and say, you gave me a halftime position, but I'd really like it to be twenty-one hours.
That's a great point.
So, I'm looking for a motion for about the resolution.
Can I just, can I address the resolution?
Please, go ahead.
I'm done.
Yep. I just wanted to point out the General Appropriations Act Resolution, which began on page fifty-two. It has been updated, there have been no changes except on page fifty-three, no changes except. I did go and compare the millage rates to the L forty twenty-nine, and in the first, the fourth paragraph there, that be it resolved, the fourth point two six nine three mills is a combination of the county millage at three point four five four two, which is the rollback amount that was approved back in nineteen sixty-nine, and that's where we are today for the county. The point four nine seven oh is the rollback on the county roads, because that will probably be coming up on next year's ballot, if they choose to pursue that. And the three point one eight one, this will be the last collection for that senior services that have originally been approved at three point two and eighteen, so that represents the rollback. So, other than that, those are the only adjustments made to this resolution. And this basically just forwards it, because with the adoption of this document next week after your public hearing, that's what will adopt your budget, your staffing levels, and everything contained in the public book in the office that you have said to the state to do.
Thank you. Any questions, Colonel? Commissioner Laughton.
Well, I would move to recommend to Lelandon County Board of Commissioners that the 2020 General Appropriations Act Resolution be forwarded to the public hearing set for October eighth, twenty nineteen.
And this at next week would be a roll call vote, but this time, we'll just have it to move it forward?
I'll second that.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes six zero. Thank you very much. Okay, then that brings us then to the goals.
Okay, so getting back to our goals, I think that, you know, when you look at the big picture of the other goals that we set, we've come a long way this year, and I'm proud of the work that we've gotten done there. But, I did want to draw your attention back to that circle of blue email that we all received, and just emphasize the importance of the consideration of this. I think back in September, we had septic week declared, just the middle of the month, and we received information about that. Septic systems are small-scale wastewater treatment options when used at home or complex or in a complex, a home complex. They cannot easily be connected to municipal water systems. And I know that, you know, that I've mentioned the municipal water systems and how well they've been monitored or not around the state, but our septic systems are just as important as those municipal systems, if not more so, because there's more of them. And I just kind of draw your attention back to the information that you all received a year ago, January, when you had a day-long presentation on wastewater and septic, and kind of would like to have a discussion with the other commissioners about their feelings at this point on having a countywide ordinance that would protect our county. So, would you like to hear from other people about that? Have a discussion of our goals?
Well, I mean, the local communities are making decisions about it. You know, I've talked to Bingham Township, they don't, they don't really want to have an ordinance. So, Suttons Bay has mostly the village, and they are already on a municipal system.
Right.
Which pollutes more than any septic system ever could. Keeps overflowing, so, so, I mean, at least I don't see where it's, if locals want to do it, they are doing it, and we don't need to have a countywide.
One of the reasons we, thanks for bringing it in, one of the reasons we have goal-setting in January is we set our agenda for the year, and this board did agree on this as an agenda item. So, to dismiss it out of hand and say the townships are going to do it doesn't mean our responsibility to consider it, it is our goal. The townships are, some of them are doing it, but they have enforcement issues, they have budget issues, and they're doing it because the state and the county have not done it. And the townships don't, can't enforce their own standards. It's got to be a countywide or a statewide, and there's got to be enforcement, and there's got to be inspection. And it doesn't have to be the Health Department that does the inspection, it could be private contractors. But, this county, we set up a goal to explore options. So, you can say, Mr. Chair, that you're not interested, but you are a part of a board that said, we will discuss this, and we will consider this this year. So, that is our obligation. So, we can't dismiss it out of hand and say, I'm not interested, or I'm not interested. As a board, we are interested, and as a board, we said, we are going to deal with this. So, until we deal with it and take action, we haven't done our responsibility.
Well, we have taken action. Commissioner Laughton.
This is, this is my objection to throwing goals out there in what we've done the last few years. We've just said, okay, whatever, anybody's interested, let's throw it on there as a goal, and we can vote for it or vote against it, doesn't matter, it's a goal. And when you argue about it, you say, well, it's just a goal, you know, we're going to talk about it or not. We have talked about this, we've talked about this a lot, and yet, it just keeps coming back to this table. And I agree with Will. Just because it's a goal doesn't mean necessarily are going to take action on it, or we're not going to take action on it. It's, it's a goal we're may or may not going to get to. In the meantime, things change. Townships are taking action, and they can enforce their own ordinances, that's why they're done at township level. We've already taken a step with the digitization of the health board records, so that we know what we're talking about, because what we don't know is any number, if there's zero, one, two, three, or a hundred systems that we should be looking at or be concerned about. We don't know that information yet. We can go round and around on this issue, as we do each time, but at present day, if anyone knows of a system, or they're concerned about a system that they think needs to be checked out at any time, they can give that information to the Health Department, and the Health Department then can move forward on checking out that system. If it's not in our records, then they can go request to inspect that system or look at that. And in this process, it's beyond that, if the person doesn't want it looked at. So, I commend those townships, if they know their townships best, they know their soils best, if they really think that they need a ordinance in their townships, they've got every right to do that. I've not been petitioned by my townships to move forward with this, so I am not prepared to take this issue up today.
Commissioner Russell.
Well, I think this issue has come back to the board a number of times, as Commissioner Laughton has pointed out, and I think because of that, and the leadership this board has shown in tackling the issue, at least in terms of discussion, that we have had townships moving forward. I do believe, based on my own township, that there is concern and about it being township rather than countywide, and an inclination that it would be better to move in that direction. In fact, I had some conversation at their request on that. I also think that we have been moving closer, believe it or not, and I think that there are, perhaps, we're at a point where some suggestions can come forward that might appeal to everyone. I think we've all said, we want, we want a resolution, we want an ordinance that would serve Lelandon County, not a clone. But, I think we've had a lot of discussion, and I think we can reach that, we just have to be open-minded. It's kind of like having an umbrella. If it's not open, the mind is, if it's not open, it's useless. So, let's open our minds to this and see if we can't continue to move a little bit closer.
Commissioner Wester.
Our goal says we will explore household septic system inspection options and potential ordinances. It doesn't say that we will adopt them, but we must explore them, because that's what we agreed to do as a board. And right now, we're nearing the end of the year, and if we don't address this, we have failed on thirty-three percent of our goal, because we set up three broad goals. In my profession, before I retired, sixty-six percent is a D minus. We don't want to be a D minus board. We said we were going to do these three things, we must do these three. Now, the majority of this board will decide how we meet this goal, and it may be to do nothing, but we must address it, because our goal was, we will explore and consider, and we have not yet done that this year, and that is our goal. So, I would like to move that we place this on the November Executive Committee or Agenda as a discussion piece, to see how we're going to move forward, or if we're going to move forward on this goal. That is my motion.
I'll second that.
Mr. Rush. No?
Not right now.
Okay. Well, I do believe we have had this before, it was brought up to the Executive Committee, I think in July, June or July, maybe even before that, and we actually decided to table it, set it aside. So, we made a decision already on this. Now, it's being brought back surreptitiously through flow, it's being brought back, and now, this time, you know, twice on this agenda. And to me, we've already settled this. We've already talked about it, we've had the discussions, we've had the experts, and now it's come back again. So, even when we make a decision, you don't accept the decision, you say, I do. And I've talked to my township, and they have said, they're not interested in them having a septic ordinance. So, they said, if the county wants to do it, well, then you go ahead, but we're not interested. So, we have made the decisions, but you don't accept it. So, you, you just bring it back up, you just decide that you want to do it again, and then you say, we haven't met the goal. Because you only have one goal, and that's to put it in place. And if you don't do that, then you keep bringing it back. I mean, how many times do we have to discuss this and put it as a goal, when it's been decided several times not to do it? But, you insist on it, you know, that's why I say I'm not interested, that's why I say it's the township's decision, they can decide it, and if they don't want to do it, then that's fine. But, to me, you're disingenuous when you bring this up like this. You actually continue to do, say that it's a goal, we'll settle it, but then it's not, because we get it settled, and because it isn't the way you want it, you move, you bring it back again.
Well said.
Commissioner Reddick.
I don't know if you were addressing that to one individual or multiple individuals. I was not a member of this board when that presentation was made a year ago, January. I just am aware of the presentation. It is, you know, it is a goal that we've set, and I think that, you know, we have discussions, and there was interest by four of us, that we continued to discuss this, and I'm sorry that Commissioner Ann Sargi isn't with us. I mean, how many times do we have to discuss this and put it as a goal when it's been decided several times not to do it? But you insist on it. And that's why I say, "I'm not interested." That's why I say, "It's the township's decision, they can decide it. And if they don't want to do it, then that's fine." But to me, you're disingenuous when you bring this up like this. You actually continue to do, say that it's a goal, we'll settle it, but then it's not, because we get it settled, and because it isn't the way you want it, you move, you bring it back again.
Well said.
Commissioner Redenbach.
I don't know if you were addressing that to one individual or multiple individuals. I was not a member of this board when that presentation was made a year ago, January. I just am aware of the presentation. It is, you know, it is a goal that we've set, and I think that, you know, we have discussions. And there was interest by four of us that we continued to discuss this. And I'm sorry that Commissioner Ann Sargi isn't with us today, because I've had discussions with him that have indicated to me that he's interested in getting more information. The health department has indicated to me that they now can identify human bacteria. They could trace it by DNA back to an individual, you know. So, you know, I just feel that it's a very important issue. It was set as our goal, and that we need to keep discussing it. There are so many failing systems. Water is our most precious resource. We can't live without it. So, you know, I think it's very important that we continue the discussion.
Commissioner Rush.
I represent two districts, one in Elmwood, one in Bingham. Both my districts are not interested in this. We're on septic in Elmwood for the most part, and Bingham's not interested. This ordinance has been allowed to be implemented at the township level. Each of you have different districts than I do. Each of you have townships that may or may not have a septic ordinance. What you want to do is impose on the people in my district what you or the people in your district want. Did you ever think about that? You're imposing something on my district that they don't want. They have an opportunity to put an ordinance in place if they want it. I like to give them the benefit of the doubt. Go home and work on your own districts, is my recommendation to you, if you want this. As far as countywide, all the people in the county don't want it. Some do, some don't. But you're pushing this on the people that don't want it.
Commissioner Wester.
It would be convenient if groundwater system recognized conflict borders, but it doesn't.
No?
We have a sixth great lake, and that is a groundwater under this state. Now, I'm a little bit offended by being called disingenuous, because I bring this up, because the chair chaired the meeting where we set the goals. If we have a meeting in January, and we again set goals, I hope we take them seriously. I'm going to withdraw my motion for today, because the person that brought this to our goal list is not here today, and he deserves an opportunity to vote on it. So I will withdraw my motion. But I'm going to take serious the idea that we established three goals, and that is our responsibility. And we have not taken action on that third goal. So don't call me disingenuous. I am doing what board members are supposed to do. Follow through on commitments, what we made. As a board, four to three, we set this as a goal. We have not yet done it. We have not yet done what we said we'd do. I insist that we follow through. I withdraw this motion. I will make it in our meeting when Commissioner Ann Sargi is here.
Is that okay with the second?
Yes, it is. I was the second.
All right. Commissioner Lotner, if you have anything else.
As I've said before, we work as a board, but we are also individual commissioners. We did not all support this going on the agenda. So if we do not all support moving forward with this goal, you've got to understand that. Point is, this has come to this table, this board, this table, once already, at least once. We discussed it. And so it has been brought, and just because there was no action, then that you've also got to accept. It's a two-way street. All minds must be open, but yet nobody seems to want to open up the fact that townships are moving forward with their own septic ordinances, as they see fit for their townships, that we are not being petitioned by these other townships to go forward with county, that we're moving forward with better systems all the time. We're moving forward with better ways of taking care of our groundwaters all the time, that even our lakes are cleaner than ever in this county. And so minds have to be open always. And we also have to be open to the fact that we have a neighbor in county that just dismissed their entire ordinance, because it wasn't doing what they thought it was going to do. So we all must also open our minds to the fact that we don't always have to over-regulate our citizens. There are ways of doing things that we can still take care of our resources, as we have done in the past, and even look at more serious infractions in the county when it comes to our environment, than to just keep hammering our residents here in this county with an ordinance that isn't going to do what everyone believes it is going to do, and put further hardships on those trying to live in and perhaps buy in this county.
Mr. Redenbach.
Conversation seems, is getting kind of personal, and I don't feel that, you know, it should be. You know, I would like to consider it still as a discussion, and yes, we did discuss it one other time earlier, and no action was taken. So to me, the topic is still open for discussion. And I brought it forward today, you know, for discussion purposes. One-seventh of the county, my district, you know, is covered by ordinances now, and I'm very happy about that. But I do recognize the groundwater is under all the rest of the county as well. And I kind of wonder if the state passes a statewide septic code or health ordinance. I mean, certainly, the people that are not in agreement with it will be governed by it. And that's the decision that, you know, the state will say. So hopefully, they'll move along on something, and then we can stop discussing it. But in terms of my county, I mean, in my district, and the people that I do represent, they are in favor of it, and I would like to see it passed on a countywide level, so.
Commissioner Rush.
I fully support the digitization of the sanitation department, because today, we really don't know if we have a problem, how small or how large the problem might be. But going out there and putting a blanket ordinance when we don't even have an idea of a problem, to me, is kind of backwards. By digitizing these records, we now are empowering our health department to look through the records, to see when septic systems were put in, when they were last inspected. I'm sure they can get that information and record that information. There's a whole host of information that can be found, recorded. And when your environmental guy over at the health department recognizes that he's got a home that has gone from family member to family member, and there's been, there's no record, or there's no activity, and he's getting complaints, I would think that that would give him grounds for inspections. Or if there are systems out there that have not been looked at, or there's no records on, a letter goes out from the health department saying, "We'd like to take a look at your septic." Is that allowed today? If they have a concern about a septic system, do they not have the power today to do that?
Yes.
Of course they do.
Yes.
It's in their statute. It's their mandate. So I think we're kind of putting the cart before the horse. We're jamming this thing through. And like I said, people in my districts don't want it. It's unfair of you to impose that on people in my district. But I don't really think you thought that through. But I'll give you an opportunity to think that through. So I think we're kind of putting the cart before the horse. I'd like to see the health department have an opportunity to update their records and compile some information. And, you know, as far as a goal, I kind of disagree with you, Ty. We have looked at this subject several times. And we are making strides towards improving how our septic systems are operating in the county. Look at the rain.
It is pouring out there.
But I think we have to give the, excuse me, health department an opportunity to do their job. And so with digitizing their systems, I think that's going to be a big help for them, and I think that's going to empower them to do their jobs a little bit better.
Any other comments? Yes?
And just to be short, I understand what you're saying, Commissioner Rushton, and all I would like to do is, I'm not, I personally believe we ought to have an inspection ordinance, but I think the board must look at all options, and we ought to take action, even if that action is that we're going to do nothing. Because that's the only way we get to accomplishing our goal. So I think when Commissioner Ann Sargi gets here, we ought to have a discussion of all of the potential options, and then we ought to take some action. And maybe that action is to say to do nothing until we get all those files digitized, and then we explore those. But we know that two-thirds, or whatever the math is of our septic systems, that all of those that we don't have digital files on were pre-1993. Maybe there's something we need to do with those that are a half a century old. So I'd like us, as a commission, to roll up our sleeves and seriously go beyond what we've done in the past and say, "Are there some things we might do to protect our environment?" And I think we can do that. I think we can do it in a constructive fashion, and I think we can do it in a way that everybody gets to have a say in that.
I do believe no action isn't action. When we have, Commissioner Redenbach, you brought this up earlier this year. And when we took no action, that was our action. Now that's, we're going through this again. That's what I believe, and that's why I feel the way I do. Yes?
You know, the no action, to me, meant that it was still something that we could be discussing. And, you know, when Eric was here and made his presentation, our Director of Environmental Health for the Health Department, I think he said, and I don't have those figures right on the top of my tongue, but I think he said in Benzie County, since they passed the countywide ordinance, that 80% of the systems were in failure. And then since that they put their ordinance in, that now they find that only 13% are. So to me, that just says, yeah, why wouldn't you want to do that? Because it's going to improve the groundwater. And, you know, that's something that's important to me. I look forward to having another discussion at another time. And, you know, as Commissioner Wester has indicated, it was Commissioner Ann Sargi that originally asked me to meet a goal. And I know it's still on his mind, so I don't feel it's fair to necessarily discuss it without it being here.
All right. Let us move on to financials. Review of financials. Commissioner Lotner?
Yes, I had a couple different questions. One in post-audit report one. We have, we had these, like page nine, we had Teaching Michigan Homes of Upper, I'm sorry, this is, no. It was Child Care Fund, Teaching Michigan Homes of the U.P. And we had, there's three of them. There's a January, and then there's a March, and then there's February. And so my question was, I mean, that's a lot. So was that one child or two children? Or one child for January, and then two children for March and April? And I guess I'm just kind of looking for maybe a little bit more information. Is that such a specialized home? Are we so short of homes down here? And is that, you know, the specialized home that best fits this type of situation?
I think we'll have to email Joe Pollo, because it doesn't match, meaning for question purposes, it shows, like 176 is the quantity of one-to-one at 22 days. So I'm not sure if it's an hourly rate, meaning more of a one-on-one care versus what it is to go and spend, and then meals and lodging. So we can ask Joe for a clarification on this grouping. It does come from the 292 Child Care Fund, so it is part of that childcare grant, but we'll need to find out, because there's not much of a description. It basically looks like it's a number of hours with one-to-one therapy, is my guess. But we can, it does not look like it's a service in the sense of housing as well. Right?
Okay.
Right.
So then how many children?
Right. Yeah, because it's telling me quantity is like 112, one-to-one, 14 days and eight hours per day. So I'm thinking it's more of like a therapy session, you know, versus, so we can get a little bit more clarification on Joe, from Joe Pollo on that.
Okay.
Any other question?
On page 10, we had a snafu with fingerprints taken and were never processed. What happened? Do we know what happened with that?
Page 10. Yeah. About Turner refunding the fingerprints? Okay. Yep. So when the sheriff's department issues fingerprints, these were taken back in January, and the fingerprints, that was when our computers had failed?
Oh, yes.
Yes. So we didn't have the state communication. So not until, actually, we waited, and they tried contacting them to see if they were in a holding pattern.
Gotcha.
And they were not. So they were never received by the state, so we refunded the gentleman.
Gotcha.
Yep.
Go ahead.
Okay. In Claims and Accounts, page four, we have Ennis Trucking, I think, is this what Chat was talking about?
That's for the roof. When they cut the pipe, the freon pipe, we rented it for, you know, like I said, we did a swap for the $5,500 worth, for the almost $4,000 worth of damage to them. There was a repair, and then went to rent some storage units, refrigerated storage units for the food.
Okay, that's what we rented them for. Okay, I understand that now. All right. Okay, that makes sense.
So the left roof and took responsible for that.
Gotcha. Okay. And then I see we had Lelandon, that would be the Lelandon Community Cultural. And we see a lot of these, and I bring them up quite often. This is Child Care Fund. It's beginning ballet lessons for juvenile. And we kind of get a little thumbnail sketch about why we do this. Sometimes it's driver's training, sometimes it's clothing, sometimes it's a haircut, whatever. So I guess I would, just personally, I would like to know a little bit more of why, why this is important to this child, so I can better understand why Child Care Fund would pay for ballet lessons. There's a deeper underlying thing there that we just never get. They just say, "Well, it's, the child needs lessons," and it falls under childcare. You know, it always seems to be the explanation. "Well, it falls under childcare." I would just like to learn a little bit more how.
That'll be a question for Joe Pollo as well. So I'll make sure. That's the 296. So that's your So that's your diversion and prevention fund.
Okay. Okay. I couldn't find that on here. What, were you talking about something specifically? Page seven. And this was on Claims one?
Yes.
Anyone have any others? Commissioner Rettenbach, you had your hand up earlier?
Uh, no, I'm, I've got it. My question answered. Thank you.
All right. So then we move on to special reports by staff commissioners and affiliated agencies. Do you have any? No?
Mr. Bunnick, can you give us a report next week on your upcoming trip to Washington?
Yes.
So you guys can have a jumbo?
There we go. Well, and, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
And, and maybe not today, but at, at, maybe next Tuesday or next month, I'd be interested in a report from where we are. We're working with Grand Traverse County on the 2% grant. I'm a little uneasy with, with working with them on doing that. I, I prefer, I, I think we ought to move forward with something. But I'm not sure that, that using the VEDA group or the airport group is the way to go with that. And I'd like to have a little bit more discussion about how we might proceed with the tribe to, 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 to see if we can reach some understandings. And I'm, it's not going to be too far in the future when we are going to again be reviewing 2% grant, or allocation application.
Next month?
Yeah.
Right. Well, I mean, from, from that, we did, we did talk with, you know, the Chairman and a member of Grand Traverse County and, and their administrator. And basically, they, they want to get an opinion from the Gaming Commission about, you know, where we can go. But they, because they, they felt, they felt exactly like, like we did, that things are not being done in the proper way. According, the tribe is not. You know, they're giving to, to, to people that aren't local, that aren't, you know, right next to them. But they don't know anything to do about it, and they felt very similar to what you do, that if they don't apply for them, it'll just go to some other county. So they're just doing it for the money to keep it in their county.
Right.
And even though they know that's not what the context says. So, they're breaking the rules just so they keep it in their, their county, just as we do.
So are there plans to move forward with, with working with the Gaming Commission? Or, I, my question is where?
Well, we don't, we want to get an opinion from them.
Yeah. We had, it was a very informed discussion after our airport commission.
Right.
So it's Commissioner Rushton, Commissioner Bunnick, the Grand Traverse County Chairman, their board member, their administrator, myself. They actually met with the tribal chairman. And I'm certainly not speaking on their behalf, but from what the administrator told me and what the Grand Traverse County Chairman said, that discussion did not go well. He made it very clear that they believe they're in compliance. No one has ever issued legal opinion saying they're not. And they're continuing to do it the way they want. The chairman's been very vocal at all meetings that his priority is first responders and that process. So what, they asked if we could set up a meeting with a member of the Gaming Commission to see what their perception is. Are they willing to take this on? Are they willing to have dialogue with us or not? When I tried calling them about this issue 2013, I did not get a positive response that they were interested in pursuing this. But we'll see. So with that meeting, it was kind of informed, we decided I would call the Gaming Commission, see if they would even want to have dialogue with us. And Grand Traverse County, you had their office. Is that a fair assessment?
Right. Right. You know, that we would, then, you know, work together to see if we can get some kind of settlement. And that's all, that's all it did. It was about five minutes long.
Thank you, sir.
All right. So then that brings us to public comment. Please come forward.
Glenn Falgier, Cleveland. My cousin's 35, 40-year-old sons were in town. And I had lunch with them all last week. They work in water quality. You know, younger people are interested, interested in their public health and the quality of their water. One works for the EPA in Washington State on drinking water. So these are very informed. Another one works for Parks and, the Parks and Rec Department in Los Angeles. They were shocked that we do nothing to protect our drinking water in terms of septic systems in this state. They couldn't believe it. The only state in the country. This is not something untoward. When I hear a comment that my constituents don't want it, I'm lucky. I live in a township that has a new septic ordinance. When I hear my constituents don't want it, you guys flush your damn toilets. And guess what? I bet your stuff ends up in Lake Leland. And Solon and Casson, that groundwater comes directly through our lake. Now, if you are not informed enough to know that, ignorance is not an excuse. Groundwater travels. You are not just flushing, and it stays right there in your own little system. If you have an aged septic, you are affecting people outside of your district. Yes, you are. Information is really important. That's like saying, I would rather not have speed limits because that infringes on my ability to do whatever I want. Yes, it may cost some money to have septic systems fixed. But does one person have the right to say, I have a right to flush my fecal matter in wherever I want? So where do personal rights start and stop? Someone else's right to contaminate groundwater means I don't have the right to have clean water? Water's pretty important. And I'm very offended at looks of derision from my county board. We know there's fecal material in our lakes. Human and Teric fecal material. We expect you guys to act in our interest and to protect our public health. And when I see derision about my public health, I have a right to pee and poop wherever I want? Excuse me, I drink water. My children come here. Over 50% of our tax base is based on our water. We're a tourist economy, and we better protect our assets. How about a work group in the Health Department of people who know what they're talking about and act on facts? And scientific data. People who really know what they're doing, not people with opinions. This is our health.
Any other case to report?
I get to follow a scientist. Gary Zemitis, Leland. Haven't been here for a while. I mentioned that earlier. I'm glad I came. I see the interaction between you guys on this septic thing was very interesting. I don't know why you're worried. Because we've got people in Washington that says the world's going to end, and it's 11 years now. Just when my battery runs out. Wow! You know, and what Commissioner Lottner said, and what Commissioner Rushton said, and what Commissioner Bunnick said, you don't understand. These people are relentless. Unless they get their own way. Commissioner Lottner brought up that the districts or the townships know their needs and wants and its soil and all that. Great point. Commissioner Rushton said, hey, why don't we let the Board of Health, Health Department, do their job? My commissioner said the people in my township want this. I don't think so.
You weren't at the meeting?
I don't think so. Not everybody's on the sewer system like me. But I don't think everybody wants this. We're complaining about our sewer system and the cost of that. Earlier, I talked about how things cost people and how it's affecting people coming here. Well, this is another cost. Let me say this to you. Some people on the board think they can fix everything. Your, what's the term for wonderful place to live? You can't control everything yourself. This board cannot control everything. That's why you have different areas of government. You have township, you have county, you have state, you have federal. Why don't we have the federal take care of everything? That doesn't make any sense either. So, I know it's not a surprise to you, but I agree with Commissioner Lottner. I think the townships know what to do. And Commissioner Rushton, you made an excellent point to say, hey, let the Health Department do their job. And that's what you should be doing. Calling them and asking that question. You know, I've been through this septic, or thing for, for years now. I came here to find out what the next manufactured crisis is. And we have another, a rehash of this manufactured crisis, you know. Clean water. I think that water in this county and this state has improved. All readings, I read it, it's improved. We're in better shape than most of the country and most of the world. And you're worried about the future. So am I. I don't have much future left. I'm old. I'm as old as you. So, let's think this thing through, please. I know, Mr. Whitwell, you like committees and committees and committees and committees and committees. I've sat through committees and committees and committees and committees and committees. It doesn't do anything. I was a president of several different companies. Big deal. Okay? I'm a nothing. I'm just a citizen. I'm not a officer of a political party or anything. I was one party, I switched to another, just like you did. That's what you say. Anyway, my time's up. And I thank you for your, I'll be back because it, this is great. You know? You guys should get some boxing gloves and we can decide it that way.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to commission comments. Commissioner Westle?
Good to see Mr. Zemitis back. Thanks for coming.
Any other Commissioner, so this one?
Yes. One thing, I, words are important. So I believe what I said is the township, Leland Township, was interested in exploring, not that they were asking for it at this point in time, they're exploring. I just wanted to note that presentations are being scheduled around the county to acquaint the public with the millage and the benefits of early childhood programs and services, and an opportunity to ask questions. So rather than rely on specious information, such as what was presented here today, or opinions without documentation, I would encourage voters to attend one of the presentations that are coming up, and there'll be many more scheduled, so that they can have an opportunity to, to learn firsthand and make an informed choice at the polls. There's one on October 2nd tomorrow at the Suttons Bay High School, which the League of Women Voters is sponsoring. And that is, will be on early childhood, but also will discuss the millage at the end. And there's also one at the Bay Theater on October 10th. And that one will be showing the film Resilience, which is something that the county has been supportive, supportive of. And there will be a discussion about the millage at that presentation as well. And then there is one on October 21st. Again, it's another public forum, which will be at the Old Art Building. And there are others that are being set up for Glen Arbor and Suttons Bay and Northport. So there will be lots of opportunities, and we hope and encourage that our public come out and learn information and ask questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment? Commissioner Rettenbach?
I just want to state that as a member of this board, or as a member of the Health Board, I'm not personally pushing for anything. I'm offering a point of view that I've heard expressed by the Director of Environmental Health as a, as public service and as a matter of public safety. So I just wanted to make that clear. But it's not that I'm personally pushing for anything.
Any other comment? Commissioner Lottner?
Um, yes. I'm going to say that for the amount of times that this board has had presentations and has had educational sessions on this item, we are very informed. For those of us who have lived on septic systems our entire lives, we are very, very, very informed. For those of us who live on the soils we live on for generations, we are very, very informed. There was a presentation here given by experts in the field. There is nothing better for our environment than a healthy, working septic system. And when a healthy, working septic system does its job, those things are filtered through the soils. Those waters never reach the groundwaters, which never reach our lakes. The system fails. It comes up. When it comes up, it needs to be taken care of before it can run across the ground into some form of water. So generally, and usually, when it fails at that rate, it has a likelihood to back up into the home. Those systems have to be taken care of. So I think that a person ought to listen to experts and how these systems work. Septic systems are much better, actually, than the municipal systems that dump things back into our precious lakes. For all Benzie County did with their ordinance over the years, with their point of sale, which is where everyone wants to go with this, the film, a film alarm in their system dumped hundreds of thousands of gallons of, that affluent spoken so well about, into Lake Michigan. That's what this municipal system did for our environment. So we are very informed. That is all, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to approval of financials. Amendments?
I would recommend approval of Claims and Accounts, $996,075.32.
We should do amendments and transfers.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Yeah.
Did you want, I have hard copies of the money watch on there. Does everybody have a email?
I've got the email here.
Okay. I just want to make sure, just in case.
Thank you. So I would recommend approval of, they were amendments, number zero?
19-012 and 19-19-013 were the amendments.
Yes. So move.
Support? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
All those opposed? Motion passes six-zero. And we have Transfer 19005.
So move, recommend approval?
Report.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes six-zero. And now that brings us to Claims and Accounts.
In Claims, $996,075.32.
Report.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes six-zero.
Approval of Post Audit, $3,521,37.29.
Report. Is it 29 or 20?
I have 29.
I have 29.
Okay, oh, good, I have it wrong. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes six-zero. We are adjourned.